Am I, am I, is my mic good? Or am I at? I can pick from two. Do that. Is that good? Alright, everybody. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Welcome, welcome. We're excited to see somebody here tonight. We've, the sun is just about to set, which hopefully is not a sign of anything at all, but we're gonna get started here tonight. So anyway, thank you for everyone who can make it. I have our department heads here. A Lusterstown residents are here. Good to see you. And we're, we're ready to go. So tonight is the, the public meeting on the capital improvement plan for 2027 to 2031. It's hard to believe we're talking about 2030s at this point, but that's how quick these things move. We're going to talk about the process. This is a very different process than what we are accustomed to, and it's different than our budget process. So it's, it's, this is a much more informational meeting, and I'll get into that, I guess, as we move along here. So this is the agenda, what we're looking at tonight. So we're talking about expectations, the what and why of the CIP. Again, this is a very different process for those used to the budget process from last spring. Talking about some different, it's a different method. We define our CIP criteria, replacement methodology, which is largely for vehicles and, and large pieces of, of infrastructure that are not capital, that are, that are 50,000 above, but of that sort of middle ground there. The year one review, which I think is something that's very important for where we left our conversation between the Budget Committee and the Select Board last spring. Effectively, what does all this mean next year? And what is sort of somewhat of a preview of what next spring will bring for all of us? So that's, I think, a, a very instructive piece of this. Then we'll move into the building and land review, road construction, which is its own sort of, you know, weird road to deal with, and then some identified long-term needs. And, and I don't wanna spend too much time in the early part here, because those identified long-term needs are really the, the straw that stirs the drink of significant impacts and significant investment into the community. But before we get to, you know, what may come someday, we gotta work through some of these, some of these more building blocks of, I think, what'll get us to, to being able to have that conversation. So, let's talk about the expectations. The first thing is, this is an opportunity to give the Select Board and the Budget Committee a working knowledge of the issues in the short and long term. It's meant to be a five-year plan. There are issues, as I just talked about, in terms of long-term needs that go well beyond five years. But this is an idea, this is really an opportunity for all of us here to say, a preview effectively of what's coming of the, the building blocks. No votes or decisions sort of be made on this plan. This is really a conversational, uh, meeting. It's, it's a workshop. There's no votes anyway, you know, workshop. But this is an opportunity to, you know, provide dialogue and discuss and, and, and really talk about what you see, what you feel, what your experiences are. This is, it's a living document. So this is really a snapshot. Department heads have been engaged on this since late August. This is your first chance to really have a chance to talk about it and see it and digest that. No one's expecting the, the answer to the world's problems this evening, but it's an opportunity to start to dig into some of these longer issues. And so we'll, we'll have some things that will come up tonight. We could have a, not that I'm planning this, Abby, but if there was a big storm that hit the harbor, this, sorry. That changes the priorities here, right? Obviously. So there's a lot that'll occur between now and when you see the budget, even for the year one numbers. But obviously, we feel better about sharing that. We feel better about talking about what year one looks like. And when I say year one, we're only talking about capital items. We're not talking about salaries. We're not talking about benefits. We're not talking about some of the softer pieces of the budget. So we're talking about just capital needs. And then really talking about feedback. So feedback on the issues at hand helps to drive the budget creation. You know, where does it go? Where does it come from? We've got department heads here. We've got department heads who'll be watching. I'm here. Megan's here. Select Board, everyone's here to listen and talk. So. Let's talk about what this means. What is it? So CIP is meant to identify capital. This is the purpose that's, that's in the book. It's meant to help identify capital needs at a large and scale, normal replacements, new projects, or major asset procurement. So this doesn't mean these are new costs. There's a page we're gonna come to that talks about what the year one expenditures will be. These are not upwards and above what already is in the existing budget. In large, in, in many cases, they're simply replacements of what's there. It's a use of reserve funds. It's that, it's what we're actually purchasing. It's not necessarily what we're asking the taxpayers to fund. There may be grants. There may be other alternative sources of funding. But to get a sense of what's the, what's the world we're, we're working in, okay? So the definition, it helps us to make effective budgeting decisions for large purchases and projects. Provides a planning schedule, identifies options for financing. This is very important, because as I said, those long-term, you know, some of those longer-term issues, that's not something that you'll see in the budget for this year. But it's something that all of us as, those who are involved in that budget process to come need to be aware of. That's around the corner. We wanna link our municipality with the strategic, strategic plan, the annual budget, and the comprehensive plan. That's been discussed, and, and I think this newly approved comprehensive plan provides us some, some runway there. There's obviously much more work to be done with the comprehensive plan, so we'll see where that moves. So the benefits of this, you synchronize your capital and your operating budgets. The idea is that this process helps inform that next, that next process, that operating budget that you'll all see and chew over, and we'll all eat well and have past candy around here in a few months. But that process, that's, you know, the synchronization of those two efforts is, is improved by a CIP. Systematically evaluates competing demands for resources based on a prioritization matrix reflecting the municipality's long-term goals and objectives. The idea here is not all needs are the same. Some needs have priorities. Some needs are based upon why is it a priority? And, and why do we value one priority over another? We're identifying and prioritizing and optimizing the financing of capital projects. We link the strategic plan and com- comprehensive plan and fiscal capacity, which is obviously very important, and something we talked quite a bit about in the spring. Fiscal capacity of our taxpayers, continue to fund what we're asking them to fund, is limited. And we have to be wise about that. And I think a lot of the conversation, both from the department heads, from Megan and I, and the Select Board, Select Board's goals, thus far, you know, what has come out of the Budget Committee so far is that there is a limit on that. And so how do we work within those limits? And then lastly, we inform the public about the town's investment in infrastructure and equipment. We have to talk to, you know, there's been a lot of discussion with the Budget Committee, but we need to inform the residents about what we're doing, what's going on, what are the costs? Absolutely. We also need to be aware of what are the dangers? What are the costs that are to come if we don't properly plan? And so this effort is really meant to do the properly planning part. Some things we can't avoid, some things we can. But that's why we go into this process. I won't go into too much of the who, what, and why, but largely we're listing capital projects, equipment and major assets. There's rankings of those projects. We finance, there's a financing plan, a timetable for construction or completion. There's justifications of the projects, classification, itemization, explaining for the project expenditures if known. Basically, the who, what, where, when, and why of, of these varied ideas. Now, before we, you know, it's, this is a process that can very quickly go into the weeds, right? Because there might be a, a, a very important project, and we wanna, you know, well, what about this? And have you talked with this vendor? And what about, we're not at that place. So, so we, we're, we're very much, we're not at a thousand-foot view, but we're like a hundred-foot view. We really can't get into details of, you know, this vendor versus that vendor, this type of procurement. But, but we can talk about policy. We can talk about the, the broad strokes of what that is. What's gonna happen from this effort here tonight is that it will, it will inform the work that their, uh, department heads put in, in, in generating their budgets, and hopefully generating good results, either in terms of cost, or in terms of ensuring that there's an efficiency that they can gain. So there's a lot of efforts that, that will come from this. Capital assets are, are items more than $5,000 that have a useful life of more than one year. So that could be commuter equipment, office furniture, fleet vehicles and machinery, emergency response vehicles and equipment. Capital infrastructure is, is more than $50,000. It has a useful life of five years or more. And it could be any change or alteration, rearrangement, addition to new existing facilities, new construction, acquisition, improvements to sites, parking lots, buildings, or service systems. So obviously, if we're talking $50,000, and we're talking about something that's a five-year life, we're talking about something with substantial heft to the, to the municipality. So let's talk about criteria. So this is why, how we get into the, the somewhat of the rankings of what's the relative value of one product versus an issue, one, one project versus another. So the highest criteria is a risk to public safety or health. Obviously, we don't wanna have anything that puts in danger the people of our community, our, our workers, the general public, residents. That's obviously the highest of all priorities. Second of the-
When do we comment, or after you finish?
Well, I'm gonna, yeah. So what I'm gonna do is, we're gonna get through the criteria. We're gonna get through, uh, the, this, this section, and then we'll be talking about methodology of replacement items. So now we're talking, then we'll be talking about the individual items that make up what's in the plan. Is that good?
Okay, but if we have a comment about the general criteria, when would be the appropriate time to bring that up?
How about I finish this, and then we'll go to, we'll, we'll hit that. How's that sound? Does that work? Great. So next up, we're talking about deteriorated facilities. This is, this is the, the, the traditional piece of infrastructure that has not received its needed upkeep and maintenance. So we're talking about investment, deteriorated facilities, a piece of equipment, the reconstruction or re-extensive rehabilitation extends its useful life, or, and to hopefully avoid or postpone replacement, replacement, or it's also replacement of the facility or piece of equipment with a new one. So that, I think that's a fairly, we can, I think, all picture in our mind what, what would constitute a deteriorated facility. Systematic replacement or repair, that's investment that replaces or upgrades a facility or piece of equipment as part of a systematic replacement plan. The idea that there is a plan to go through this and ensure that there's a, 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 a standard that is, is met throughout. Next, we're looking at improvement of operating efficiencies. So we're looking at, at those types of improvements which improve the operations and the efficiency of, of the town. Next, we'll look at coordination. Coordination is expenditure that's necessary to ensure coordination with another CIP project or maybe other established goals. So say, for example, the comprehensive plan. This would be one where coordination and, and working in conjunction with other needs, that's, uh, that would fall in. And now the last, sort of last two here, protection and conservation of resources. This is largely, you're talking about natural resources, or, I don't think we have anyone that, that actually covers this. And then last is newer substantially expanded facility, which I think is relatively self-explanatory. And I think, I think the idea with all these criteria, and, and the concept here is, it's to balance, something that's been talked about with Select Boards and Budget Committees and, you know, the last few years, is to make sure that you're investing in what you already have, and, and try to keep that up to speed and, and not letting those, those prior investments fall away. And to minimize new or expanded growth within, within the town. And so these criteria reflect that, and they reflect those, those goals. So, um, so that's, that's where we're at with the criteria. Doug, you've got, you've got some thought? You've got a thought? You wanna share?
Well, yeah, they're just, um, I know this is kind of heresy, but I'll go ahead and say it anyhow. You know, the risk of public safety or health. People that live in rural areas, and we know this applies across the entire country, whether you're in Maine, or in Iowa, Wyoming, that it can be very difficult to provide- Sorry, John. To provide the same level of service that people in Manhattan or a major city get. You know, if you want a fire truck to arrive at your house within eight minutes, you need to go to Manhattan. Same thing for an ambulance, and probably same thing for the police. So I think the criteria should more properly be, say, risk to public safety or health within our capabilities. Because the simple fact is, mid-coast Maine, if you choose to live here, you're giving up some risk to personal health and safety. And I just want us to be aware of that. So, you know, the old argument that if we save one life, that it's worth it, isn't true. You know, in healthcare, there's a quality of life, uh, quality of life year costs. And sometimes in healthcare, it's not worth spending a million dollars on a 95-year-old patient.
Well, I think we could take issue with all of those in that way. I mean, it'll always be balanced by what we can afford with economic and what our Budget Committee, what our-
Yeah. Okay, and that's fine. But we, frankly, we frequently hear that when it comes to, you know, saving one life, we have to do this, which we hear. I don't, I don't think we have to accept that assumption. And like I say, there's probably people at home that are ready to string me up, because it's, it's against apple pie and motherhood.
Well, these are just broad categories, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
What we try to approach through the capital improvement plan.
Right. Okay, but I just want people to be aware of that as we start to get into the details. You know, what's nice in Manhattan ain't gonna work in mid-coast.
Yeah.
John, was this criteria used last year also?
No. So this is, uh, do you wanna talk about the, the new format, Megan?
Sure. I, there's actually, the whole CIP plan is a new format than we've had in the past. I spent considerable time this summer going through, uh, other communities, capital improvement plans, not just in the state, but across the country. And pulled pieces from those other plans that I thought would make this process more beneficial to the town of Rockport. And one of those things was really adjusting the criteria that we use in order to categorize the projects that are presented to us from department heads.
Thank you.
So, let's talk about replacement methodology. I know that's everyone's favorite topic. I, I, I do. I knew you were. Anyway, so the first up is Public Works. Public Works has, has by far, far and away the, the most vehicles of, of any department. So their replacement schedule is obviously probably primary amongst all. Largely, it's driven by, we're talking here about operational readiness and cost control. And, and that's largely driven by what do you need to operate? And it's number of plow routes, number of certain-sized vehicles to operate on, on those given plow routes. How many spare vehicles do you need to have available in case of breakdowns? How do you ensure that you can repair what you have and, and ensure that there's a, there's a good turnaround of that? One thing that's a little bit unconventional is that Public Works doesn't necessarily put our new vehicles right into the, the fray and use them in a heavy capacity. For example, we're in the middle of, of ditching, where there's stumps and rocks and things. That's not probably the place we necessarily use the new vehicle. Not because we wanna make it look pretty, but because we can actually, you can use the new vehicle and the old, old vehicle and get as much out of that, that effort. It keeps the new trucks running with less costly and preventable maintenance. And then the harsh use, the chips, the, the cracked windshields and so forth get served for things that are sort of the second line, uh, or spare vehicles. So on the next page here, this is, this is the breakdown of, of that plan. So we have a, an F-350 director's truck. That's on a five-year cycle. That 350, that is involved in plowing. It's moved to a secondary truck, or a crew truck, or a mechanic truck when it's replaced. So right now, we have a spare that is a crew truck that our, our crew leaders use when they're on job sites. Moving beyond that, we have F-500s. And those are the three-yard bodies on the back. They're replaced every five years from the day of purchase. And then the older three, F-50s are moved to a secondary truck and kept for another three years. So though we say five years, it's actually a much longer term, because they're, they're moved into a spare capacity. Now, there are instances where, you know, this truck has given us trouble. This one hasn't, even though the other one's younger. And we're gonna go by what vehicles are working for our crews, what, what's our mechanic seems to think is, is, uh, the best foot forward for, for what we should keep in terms of spares. And those are, we have the vast majority, you know, obviously, those are the tunners that you see, you know, driving around. Then on the last category, we have our large dump trucks, which are a seven-yard. Those are replaced every 12 years. Again, the issue of front line and second line is, or spares, is, is at play. So that gives you a sense of how that public works, and we'll get into like what, how, what that manifests into as we get into the next section, if, as we get to the end of this section.
John, have we ever leased, or we always purchase the equipment?
We lease-purchase. Do you wanna maybe talk about lease-purchasing?
Sure. Um, a lot of our larger equipment, until we're able to build up, build up our reserve accounts to be able to purchase equipment outright, we do what are called lease-purchase agreements for all of our heavy equipment. And, uh, doing it, instead of like long-term financing or something, we're generally seeing lower interest rates, and we're paying those off. I think the longest one we have is six years for heavy equipment. Now, like fire trucks and stuff like that, we'll extend that out to like a 10-year payment. We are on track, I think. In five or six years, we will start purchasing equipment outright, instead of lease purchasing it for the fire, uh, for the Public Works Department. Like, in '27, '28, we're proposing to buy a grader. We will use reserve funds to purchase that outright, instead of lease purchasing it. A vacuum truck will do the same thing. And then in '29, '30, we'll be purchasing our wood chipper and trailers outright, instead of lease purchasing those. So as we're able to build up the reserve accounts, which take time, we will start purchasing the equipment outright, instead of having a lease payment on it.
So the frequency with which we replace, when we say every five years, or every seven years, um, who decided that? Is that something we've just always done? And are we learning from other, is there a standard that other towns follow?
It's changed over the 10 years that I've been here, in terms of like how frequently we're replacing equipment. It's really been just how long we're getting a useful life out of that piece of equipment before we're replacing it. And then we adjust those schedules based on that.
So we don't automatically replace on this schedule?
No.
John? So my question is more, um, more to the notion of how do we know if we're right sizing all the equipment, all the vehicles we have? In other words, take plow trucks. Is there a correlation between how many miles we have to plow and what, you know, how many trucks we need to do that? I'm trying to get some kind of a, you know, what's the universe we're operating in here? Can we tie it to things like road mileage? Can we tie it to the, the population served? Can we tie it to the valuation of the community? You know, there must be some baseline that we're working from on this, other than, well, this is what the Director of Public Works says we need.
Right. So, so there's, currently we have nine plow routes. And those plow routes vary by size, by geographic location, by the type of trucks served. What the, the goal is, uh, has been laid is to ensure that each plow truck can complete its route with the amount of material that you're putting in the back for sand and salt. So largely, to, to maximize the efficiency and not require a need to come back, fill up again, to complete your route. Make sure that you can do that eight or nine, that, that, that those nine different routes in such a capacity. And again, you have different size standards in the back of each of those vehicles. But that they can complete their route, and in roughly the same timetable. So that way, you know, if everyone leaves at the same time, everyone comes back roughly the same time, you're able to work together to fill up your truck and move forward. So that's, plowing is, is often the stir, the straws, the, the straw that stirs the drink. It's, it really is such an impactful item for how we base, um, how we've operated over, over years. Now, the needs in the summer construction season are a little different, obviously. And that's why second-line trucks are used more often, and, and there's a bit more variation. It is also the fact that you wanna ensure that you have enough vehicles so you could start doing other work while you're also prepared for winter. So for example, we try to do a, a lot of brush cutting in the wintertime, so that way we can get ahead of the spring needs and the, and the summer needs. But to do so, you can't have a sander in the back, or you're constantly moving equipment on and off the vehicle. So that, that's where a second-line vehicles or having a few extra spares has been helpful to ensure. But predominantly, it's, if there's a breakdown, the spare is what, what runs, and you, you gear up as, as needed.
So if I'm looking at page 11 and 12, just to pick on Public Works right now.
Sure.
I'm counting six spare trucks. And then, I'm not gonna fast-forward, but I want to reference it. And we're looking at buying more trucks. So we're adding more spares? Like, how often do we-
No.
How often do we sell trucks?
As needed?
Or retire trucks?
Yeah, as, I'd say as needed. So as, as the situation dictates where we have enough spares to fulfill, you know, that second-line need, or, or if there's damage-
I would consider page 11 and 12-
Yeah.
That when they say spares, we're talking about wintertime, because that's our primary goal for our trucks.
Yeah.
We have six trucks, spares, right now.
Sure. And that, so that's, to get a sense of that, you've got three spare F-50s and three spare seven-yard trucks. So in either case, you've got, those are supporting either three or four, depending upon them. So you don't have one to replace each. Hopefully, you wouldn't have all of those three break down, right? But, you know, you certainly wanna have some available. I think that, again, this is a snapshot in time, so we're-
I would just say, as a taxpayer, like, if I drove into Public Works-
Yeah.
-middle of a snowstorm, how many trucks are sitting there with snow on their hoods?
Yeah.
Is there six, or is there four, or, you know what I mean?
How many have been, have been out in, on the roof?
Like, how many are just sitting there, waiting to be used? And then when I look ahead, fast-forward, I'm jumping the gun.
Yeah.
And we're adding more on. So are we going from six to nine, or are we going six to four?
You're gonna sell, you're gonna sell of those spares, because you don't need more than what you, what you have.
And we have sold spares in the, in the past.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm showing a 2016, a 17, 19, a 2004, seven, and 10.
I would say-
So we haven't sold them.
No, but I would conservatively say we've sold somewhere between four and six trucks over the last couple of years.
And where's that money go?
Back to the general fund. Municipal, they're, they're listed on, they're, you know, listed on municipal bids, so people can come in and-
And then the general fund goes to what?
Well, it, it can't be spent unless it's, it's obligated by, through the budget process. Yeah. Yeah.
Can I follow up on John's question?
Sure.
Having to do with plowing intensity. I realize that's hard on the vehicles. Quite a few years ago, I was told by a town manager here that the town had a black pavement policy, which meant that we plowed all the time, as much as we needed to. And it was a, and this comes down to sort of a safety issue, too. How often do the trucks go out and plow? And how often do I see them driving through the village, black pavement, with their plows down? And, um, I realize West Rockport could be a little different. But, you know, do we really need to be sending the plow trucks out? And this may be getting into the weeds too much.
Yeah.
But do we really need to be sending the plow trucks out when there's a half inch of snow? And again, you're in a rural area.
Yeah.
You know, people in Wyoming may put up with a foot of snow before they send the plows out.
Yeah.
Just throw that out there. I expect an answer.
Well, they'll, let me give you the answer. There's no such, I don't know where that town manager was looking, but this- But this town manager isn't aware of any sort of black uh pavement policy. Uh, in fact, I, I would say oftentimes are whoever our policeman on duty overnight is, is the one who reaches out to our Public Works. Uh, director who then starts our crews. And they're not obligated to call at the sign of the first flake. They're, they're, they call when they think things are starting to get greasy and starting to get, be concerning. So you're doing that, plus you're taking people who are living thirty minutes, forty minutes away from here to get in their vehicle, get ready. Drive into town, get their plow geared up, fill the sand and, and out on the door. That, that takes some time. And if, in a bad storm, often, we can have a situation, and it does happen, where, you know, we're not able to work quick enough. And, you know, things can be a little bit out of hand. The, the timing, the timing of that, the other thing I, I'd mention is the timing of that is, and, and to your point, Doug. There aren't a lot of people on the road at one or two in the morning, right? So, so there's a timeliness of that, of when that call comes in and when uh Mike Young decides, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call in our crews to do this. Um, you know, I, I don't think there is a black, there is definitely not a black pavement policy at two AM, nor would there ever will be. Uh, but also, we need to make sure that people are safe. And that's to your, to your earlier point, right, you could have a snow, snowplow on every corner and that's not cost-effective. But on the other hand, people rely on the ability to get to work and travel safely. And sometimes they're not even Rockport residents, they're coming through here from Appleton to get to the hospital or to go to Rockland or whoever it may be. And we're the entity they have to come through and we have to do our part.
Yep, and, you know, I'm all for efficiency.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we're trying to look for here.
Absolutely. Definitely. All right, let's, uh, wanna talk about fire and EMS if we can. Oh, correct. Hey, Rick.
Can you come to a mic?
Hey, Rick. Yeah, do you?
Actually, I'm sorry, I might have aired because this is a workshop.
I'm, just, quick question. Slide show's nice, is it available for us to get a hold of somewhere?
Yeah.
I'll put it online.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning.
Um, the other question I had was the total obligation that we have versus the total owned equipment? Is there a number out there that might be available?
Yeah.
For what kind of obligation we owe on equipment? You don't have to give it to me now, but if.
It's in here, hold on just a second, I gotta find it. So. Well, this includes our long-term debt, but we have.
Maybe we can just get him the information.
Probably two hundred, three hundred thousand for vehicles and equipment.
Ode?
Yep.
Two to three hundred and.
Most of our debt is long-term debt.
Okay, and you guys have a value of, of what kind of equipment we own?
Can, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt because it's, this is a workshop, there's no public comment, so.
I'll, I'll go back to my seat and come another night.
That, that'd be fine, or we can get some information to you, but I just don't wanna take up everybody else's time.
No, I just, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Rick, you and I were supposed to get together at some point when you got back and we haven't yet. And certainly we can, let's set it up and we can go through all of it. And if you got anything else that you want me to get in terms of ahead of time, just send it off and we'll, we'll do it. Appreciate it. It's a good group. It's a good group. All right. Wanna talk about fire and EMS? Let's talk about fire and EMS. Uh, so our fire apparatus, a two thousand four Ferrera Pumper, uh, a two, twenty-fourteen E-one Pumper. A twenty-eighteen E-one Pumper, twenty-twenty-five F-five-fifty Mini Pumper. And the Fire Chief, Fire Chiefs F-two-fifty. So let's separate the fire, whoops, Fire Chiefs truck, uh, there's a thirty-year replacement. That is something that is industry standard. Uh, most vehi, most, uh, run to most departments, they're gonna say thirty years is, is the, the gold standard. The Fire Chiefs F-two-fifty is on a replacement schedule for every four years. Uh, the idea is that the chief is responding all hours of the day, um, and that happens frequently. Uh, moving to the next slide here, this is more of the EMS side of things. Uh, so EMS department consists of two vehicles. It's a two thousand six Horton ambulance, which was purchased for ten thousand dollars. Uh, I think, yeah, ten thousand, uh, to get the service off the ground. We weren't sure that we would have the new ambulance in time for when we would actually receive the licensing to, to, to handle EMS calls. So, uh, this was purchased as a backup. Uh, obviously, if you don't have an ambulance and there's, there's, it's not as if you can roll a pickup truck out there and throw someone in the back. You have to have an ambulance. It has to comport with all of the uh necessary requirements. So that two thousand six was previously uh employed down in the city of, I think, Lynn, Mass, Massachusetts. Um, and for those who've driven it, it looks like it. Um, it's, uh, to say it's end-of-life cycle. Um, I think we're using the AED on it pretty often, Clay, I'm not sure. But um, it, like, everyone's had their fingers and tried to make that, that vehicle work. Um, so this, on a four-year cycle. Um, we have a two thousand twenty-four ambulance that was, that arrived in the spring. If we're on a four-year cycle, you would be ready into twenty-twenty-eight to, to deal and, and replace that. The challenge you have with ambulances is much like fire trucks, there's a long wait before you actually take delivery of them. And so you have to plan well in advance of when you actually need it to actually make the purchase. Uh, so we have some time before, before that decision has to be made. If it was a four-year cycle, that would be twenty-twenty-eight and obviously we're getting close to twenty-twenty-eight. Having said that, we're six months into a, our EMS service. So we're gonna learn a lot over the next six months, we're gonna learn a lot, we've learned a lot over the last six months. Um, there's nothing in this budget that's gonna deal with this, this issue. But again, how do we deal with fire and EMS vehicles? If we were on a normal basis, we'd be on a four-year cycle, okay?
Why is it only a four, I'm surprised it's only a four-year cycle? Is it due to the equipment that's in there?
Do you wanna come up, Jason?
Cause it seems like that's an industry standard.
It's actually an eight-year cycle, cause you purchased one, so you, you're getting one every four years, but that one lasts for eight years.
Lasts for eight, okay.
It goes to the second line, correct, is what you're saying.
Okay, that makes sense.
Right now, delivery for any ambulance service is about two and a half to three years per delivery after you order.
And then we have in the year capital improvements, four fifty for ambulance, right?
That's the cost, yeah.
But then when we look at the line item, it comes at like five hundred fifty, five sixty-seven.
That's a rest estimate.
Why, why is the difference in that? Is that?
Pricing in, in the apparatus.
So, does that include, must include interest and whatnot too for the loan?
It would, yes.
It does.
And in twenty-twenty-eight, the total cost is the four fifty. So it would be four fifty for the ambulance and then fifty-two thousand for the interest. And then if we stay on this replacement schedule and funding the reserves the way that we have proposed. In twenty-thirty-four, when we go to buy another ambulance, we'll be able to buy it outright instead of lease purchase it. Essentially saving us fifty-two thousand or more, depending on what interest rates do.
I know we're in the early stages of the EMS service. I, I was surprised, I know we have the two ambulances, but my understanding was we, we got the second one just cause it was so cheap. And we also didn't yet have the new ambulance. But I hadn't understood that we were always going to wanna have two reliable ambulances in service as part of our EMS service. So that, that came as news to me reading this.
So we always wanna have two on a rotating.
My understanding is we were just gonna buy one ambulance and it was just sort of gratuitous that we ended up with the second very cheap ambulance at ten thousand dollars.
The original plan, Rockland has three ambulances in service at all times. They purchase, I can't remember, I think they're on a two-year cycle because they have three. So when they get the third one, they sell it. This last one they were keeping. It was gonna be used for the county. We each would donate or not donate. We would each put in five thousand dollars for insurance, X, Y, Z. So if we only had one ambulance, which ours goes in for service about every five months based on the, the, the run hours. Um, we would have that ambulance available to us. Unfortunately, in this county, there's been several incidents over the last six months. Um, Tomiston was in a serious accident with a dump truck, not the ambulance's fault, demolished the truck. They ended up using that ambulance and go figure they purchased that ambulance. Said ambulance is now just finished fifteen thousand dollars in repairs, so that's been down. Warren's been, uh, without an ambulance on and off, uh, for quite a while. So ambulances in this area have been limited. Um, a lot of them are going out of service, uh, due to maintenance issues and several crashes. So we were very fortunate that we have the second ambulance. Um, believe it or not, I would say, uh, looking at the numbers, I don't, I think it averages going out at least twice a week as a second ambulance. So while the primary ambulance is out, this other ambulance is going out as well. Um, again, every time we would have to call for mutual aid, that's a minimum of eight hundred dollars. So that's saving us eight hundred dollars every time that's rolling out above and beyond the primary ambulance.
And I think once we see more of the numbers and get more familiar with what the EMS service is providing, it'll help sort of evaluate that. It just wasn't, it was news to me that this service required two reliable.
But that, that new ambulance is not in this year's budget, it's the following year, right?
Correct.
So we now, we now have a agreement. We now have an agreement if there's a need for an ambulance in wherever, Lincolnville, Rockland, so forth. Rockport has the responsibility.
We currently have five signed mutually aid agreements with other agencies in the county. To cut, to help cover us if needed, yes. And we also can cover those other towns as an equal.
And, and be paid.
And be, yeah, so it's eight hundred dollars. If we go to another town, it's eight hundred dollars. If they come to us, it's eight hundred dollars. That's the standard in this county right now for other towns county.
And where does that eight hundred dollars come to? Rockport, where's it paid from?
We, uh, we send a bill out every month to each one of those communities with two calls, sixteen hundred dollars. They send a check, goes to Megan and it goes to the revenue.
Your EMS budget.
It goes to the EMS revenue budget.
Not specifically to Megan as well.
We've also been very fortunate that we've been able to hire Purdy M staff that live right in Rockport. So if there was a mass event or say our ambulance is out and a second call comes in. We do have the availability of people in town that can go to the station, grab the second ambulance and respond to that call. Instead of us paying the eight hundred dollars to another community to cover that call.
Oh, so we don't have the staffing to drive two ambulances right now?
Not on staff all the time. But they can call it, so per DM staff kinda works like your volunteer firefighter staff. If there's a second call that comes in, they can go to the station and take the ambulance.
We also have, I believe it's seven firefighters now that are licensed to drive the ambulance.
So they can hop in it.
Correct.
And is that included volunteers?
That is the volunteers.
Okay.
That is only the vol, only, only the volunteers who I'm referring to. So, uh, Darren, Darren Robbins, um, Neil Bartley. There's several of them that took the, it's a thing you fill out online, it's twenty-one dollars and you get a license. So it used to be anybody could do it. Rules, regulations, we have to pay twenty-one dollars to have a background check, which we already do every year, so.
And, and obviously it goes without saying that all of these numbers are predicated on not doing any regionalization. Among services. I mean, if we shared services with Rockland, Camden, uh, wherever. Regionalization, which is one of the things we're talking about, then these numbers would also go out the window, cause it'd be a whole different calculus.
It would. I, I, yeah, I, I think it'd be, it'd be a different, it'd be a different calculus.
We'd still need an ambulance, we'd still have fire trucks.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think, right, and I think as, as, as Jason's describing, the excess capacity that we think might exist outside our borders doesn't seem to. So we have to, we're, in fact, we're, we're going outside to help. And we're actually funding, we're actually gaining additional revenues in the, in the process of doing so. So not only are we, uh, able to support, you know, this two thousand six engine that could. Uh, but by having volunteers who were not paying on our, our regular, as part of our staff. Uh, we're paying them as, when they're working, but obviously not paying them as sort of your, your full-timer. Uh, that's, that's additional revenue that we're, we wouldn't have captured any other way.
When, when do we see those numbers though? Like, how, what do you, like, forecast?
Yeah.
Like, if we look back to when it was just volunteers.
Right.
And, and we had the police chief, I mean, the fire chief, sorry.
Yeah.
But, like, when do we see, like, we took Northeast out of it? And now we're ma- making money. Like, when do we see where it washes out?
Well.
Where do we see the opposite? I know this could be a response time, safety time.
Yeah, right.
When do we see, like, where those numbers kinda weigh out and how it works out?
Well, I don't think, I, I don't think, I never certainly suggested, I don't think anyone suggests that, that we're gonna be in the, in a profit-making business with ambulances. I think we've seen that those that are in the business are slowly sliding away and, and those, they're shutting their doors. So that's a, that's a sign that not only is this not a profit-making business. It's something that they're actually looking more and more to municipalities because there's no way to operate an ambulance service.
Those, you mean like Northeast?
Like Northeast, like Delta, like, uh, all these ambulance services that got swallowed up by Northern Light. Um, you know, Northeast was a huge, with its multi-bases and, you know, they had, uh, you know. What they felt was cutting-edge care. Uh, now they've shrunk to effectively renting a space in Saco and one base here in Rockport with two ambulances they're staffing. So it's, the, the economics of, of for-profit ambulances just don't work anymore. And so it's, it, it forces municipalities to have to pick up the slack. And that's, I think, what you're seeing, not just here but other places.
And then when I look back at, I don't feel like we're forced, I think we got ahead of it.
Based on what's happening currently in the last few months, we were very, very smart in the decision we've made. Keep in mind, when I presented to several open community meetings, to the Budget Committee, to the Select Board, with other people with me. I think we had a price tag of one point one-ish.
It was a lot.
It was one point one with a revenue of, we estimated around two-twenty to two-forty, it's too hard to figure based on our community. So we knew upfront, it was gonna be about a seven hundred thousand dollar loss. Um, that's, I mean, we met with a ton of people. The vote for it passed overwhelmingly to support this. What I will say is, we need to be ready, things are changing in this community or in our area as we speak. Some services have lost four people in just the last month. We have, uh, been covering calls in other towns more frequently. Uh, we've gone to Camden three times in just the last week. Um, we are very fortunate that we have the second ambulance. Penn Bay has been calling us, I would say, on a daily basis. Because the services around here cannot provide transfers or transport. So if you're at the hospital and you wanna ride back home. Um, we're very fortunate that we have a lot of the Purdy M and volunteer firefighters that are willing to come in on their day off to help these people get back to their home. We've done a transfer to Biddeford, we did two weeks ago with our backup ambulance. So we are always guaranteeing, as I've said, we're gonna keep the one ambulances, the nine-one, one ambulance in town unless it's on a call. Uh, but if we have the staff, we've been doing transfers, so we've been making additional revenue on that. But Doug continues to talk about regionalization, but there's been no plan or any suggestions on how to make it work. We have looked into it. I am absolutely willing to do that. But I can tell you right now for Rockport, it's gonna be about an eight hundred to a million dollar increase in our budget alone. Because you have to have a minimum staffing level and a response plan. Rockland already has twenty-two people on their staff. Camden, I'm not quite sure of the exact number, it's around eight, but they don't have an ambulance. To get us to where Rockland would be to cover the entire area, it would be a significant increase upfront. Now, over eight years, ten years, yes, we could minimize equipment and level that out. But upfront, for the first bunch of time, it is going to be extremely expensive. Trying to get other communities to jump on board is very difficult. We tried, other communities did not wanna do it. Uh, I actually had a meeting today with the Fire Chiefs from Union. We are actually coming up with a game plan as we speak to work together. It takes time, it's not something that's built overnight, in two months, three months. But I keep hearing regionalization, regionalization, but yet no one's come up with a plan, no one's come to us with any information or suggestions.
And I think my biggest thing with that is like, I feel like we jumped ahead of it, knowing there was an issue.
Yeah.
My biggest thing is circling back and saying, okay, how's it paying off for us? That's my biggest.
Absolutely understood and I agree, and I believe.
Need to add another ambulance, do we need to just add more positions and just justify it?
One thing that we had somebody come in and speak about the, the billing portion. One thing that we had somebody come in and speak about the, the billing portion, keep in mind, none of the agencies here do billing, we have private companies that do that, ComStar does all that. They made it clear in the presentation that they gave us, it's about a nine-month catch-up cycle, so we started April first. We're just, we're still seeing bills coming in from April, May, and June. There are people that will get payments from two years down the road, so it's, it's a li- it's a significant lag, because you're dealing with all these insurance companies.
But those are the receivables, right?
Correct, it's all receivables, we are now starting to get it, I, I, John, the, the reports we get, if you saw the reports, they're mind-blowing, there's just so much in there, but I believe the first quarter, the bill, was it, the build was over eighty thousand just in the first quarter, or was that the?
So the problem that we're running into is that because we're an aging community, it also means that we're a Medicare-heavy community, and Medicare will dictate what rates they pay, and they will pay at a ceiling, and that ceiling is half of what our billable rate is. So we have to offer these allowances to people that have Medicare, that have Medicaid, so we can't collect on that. And this quarter alone, I tell you, we had forty-nine thousand dollars in allowances that we had to give back because they're Medicare/Medicaid patients. Also, companies.
Did we see that going into this, or?
We knew that we were a Medicare-heavy community. Even Anthem, Anthem, I would say, based on the reports that I've looked at, is probably one of our lower payers in terms of, like, what they, what their ceiling is and what allowances we have to write off for them. I think to Jason's point where it takes us, I mean, I just got allowances in September for some of our first calls in April. So it's gonna take twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months before we really have a good idea of what our rolling receivables are gonna be for our call volume. And that's really gonna be dictated on the type of insurance that our residents carry.
Will that be part of the information we get, the payer mix for the Budget Committee?
Um, I mean, we could do a payer mix based on, like, what our call volume has been so far, I think our original estimate. I think our billing estimates are pretty close into what the actuals that we're seeing. It's just really unfortunate that, uh, we're not alone in this, every agency is suffering the same thing, hospitals are. I mean, that's why Anthem and Northern Light are fighting because of the allowances that Anthem allows. So I think that it's just something as a medical provider, we're gonna have to work through and figure out what that means for us in terms of what our receivables will actually be in a twelve-month period. And like I said, I think it will take us time to be able to estimate that as our call volume changes.
And didn't we just receive the email today for VA?
Yes, it's been.
We just got approval to bill for VA patients in town.
And we've been working towards that since April, so like, some of this stuff isn't like the quick and easy that we can just like, jump, here's your bill, pay us twelve hundred dollars, it just doesn't work like that.
It sounds like you build a relationship with Penn Bay, Union.
We, I mean, we, we have, we have, we have great relationships, we've even done intercepts for St. George, uh, Cushing, like, there's eight communities that have EMS in this county. We are right now the fourth highest call volume already, we're the third highest in fire. So we are not one of the smallest, we're not one of the lowest, we are one of the highest. And we're increasing quicker than most agencies now, especially with the, the volume that we're getting from mutual aid requests.
And I would say, we're on the higher percentage of calls that we respond to that are billable. So some of your calls that you respond to aren't billable. I would say, going through our reports, we are much higher on the end of billing for a majority of our calls than we are not billing for them.
What is Camden doing today for ambulance?
Uh, they are partnered with Northeast Mobile Health at this current time. Keep in mind, Northeast used to have three ambulances, they've gone down to two ambulances with only one twenty-four hour to cover all three towns.
Obviously.
But Camden employs as many people as we employ, they just don't have, yes. So they just don't have the opportunity, they go out as first responders, they just don't have the opportunity to collect revenue.
Camden has zero revenue from EMS right now.
So their EMS budget is one point two million?
No, their total budget, uh, what I looked at recently was two million forty-eight thousand, and ours, with our net, is one point five. So we're lower with a full-time crew, and we are doing ambulance and transporting with two ambulances and all the equipment.
So they have both the EMS cost and Northeast's cost, yes.
With no opportunity for revenue.
So, I, this is, this is a very helpful conversation, I, we, we have probably crossed into the weeds a little bit here, but I think it's, I think it's really helpful. And, and I think, you know, to, I think to larger point you're raising, Craig, is this is going to be a learning experience still, and we're, and, and reevaluating and looking at revenues and looking expenditures. And when, I think when, you know, the budget comes before you all for, for FY twenty-seven, we're gonna be much further ahead than even we are today. And Megan and I were looking at that ComStar billing report today, and it's just, there's, there's refinement, there's improvement, and I, and I'll give credit to Jason and his crew. They have been, they've heard my angst about ensuring that we are minimizing the amount of impact that we put this on the taxpayers. And we're trying to get those who are paying, insurance companies and the like, that they're, they're supporting this service. Whether they live here, they don't live here, whatever it might be, uh, because it is, we, we try to, to get ahead of what we saw with some troubled waters. Uh, I, I think so far the early returns are good, but we've gotta keep looking and see if there's better ways to do it, so. Can we move on to police? Randy's, Randy's eager to jump up here, so I just, I don't wanna leave him. So, it, uh, again, it's four seems to be the magic number, the, that is the, uh, the term we use for replacement of our cruisers. They, after the fourth year, that cruiser moves into the, the second line or, or spare role. We, uh, we have to have two cruisers ready. While we have between one or two officers on duty, then we've had situations where, um, between breakdowns and, and, um, acts, you know, fender benders, we've, we've been, we've been down there. Randy joked one time with me that he was gonna have to call an Uber for one of our calls he had coming in. I, I'm glad he was joking.
And it rains and pours at the police department.
But it's important that you, that this is, while we have great mutual aid and great partners, you know, having our cruisers available and ready at, um, when we need them is, is important.
The way this plan is developed, we will not be purchasing a cruiser in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, when we go to replace Cruiser Seventy in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we are at a point with our reserve account, so we will be able to just pay for that with, uh, no additional impact to the taxpayers. So, the benefit of that is that we're not gonna see fluctuations in our capital investments by utilizing these reserve accounts to purchase equipment outright. We have historically always bought our police cruisers outright, but through budgeted appropriations instead of lease-purchase agreements. Uh, so being able to stabilize that will help the overall capital investment budget, uh, try to stay a little bit more stagnant than seeing these peaks and valleys.
Megan, you keep talking about the reserve fund, it's gonna cover a lot of these expenses, we've talked about different areas and so on. Where is the money coming to put in the reserve fund?
So annually, through our general budget process and the appropriation process, uh, you'll see in the budget that there's expenses for reserve deposits. And those, those amounts are then allocated to the reserve for that purpose. So for the police department, there's a police cruiser reserve, there's money allocated in the budget to go to that reserve, then it's restricted for police cruiser purchase. In the capital improvement plan, I listed out all the reserve accounts and their balances, that's on page fifty-nine.
I do see that, yeah.
Um, we do have a reserve policy that dictates how those funds can be spent, and it can only be spent as directed through that policy. So we can't take, for example, fire apparatus replacement money and buy a police cruiser with it, it's meant for that fire apparatus.
I mean, the bottom line is, all of that money comes from the taxpayers.
It does.
And the tax bills, no matter how you cut it.
Correct, but in an effort to stabilize that, so you're not seeing huge increases in your tax bill over time, we utilize these reserve accounts to help offset these capital purchases.
What would it take to shift money from one capital reserve to another? Is it forbidden in the charter, or is that how we've always done it, or?
It's not a practice that's allowed per the policy.
So it would require a policy change?
Well, you would also have an issue legally in that you would be obligating funds for use other than what it was authorized, so.
And you had the voters vote on these various reserve accounts.
Right, that's, that's what I mean.
I mean, the Select Board could, if they amended the policy to say, get rid of a reserve account, and that account had money left in it, it would have to lapse the unassigned fund balance, unless authorized by the voters in a different way.
But then the expenditure from unassigned fund balance would require voter approval.
Correct.
And going through a budget process, so it's, it would come back through in another, another fashion.
Yeah, okay. A quick question for Randy, not about the donuts.
Not about the donuts, okay.
Now that the sheriff's office is providing coverage at night between three AM.
We don't talk about security planning, Doug, 'cause that's like giving the playbook to the other team.
Okay.
I will, I will tell you that we are working with the sheriff's department on coverage.
Yeah, well, I spoke with, I spoke with the sheriff the other day.
That's, that's fine.
At the county meeting, so, but here's the que- here's the quest.
That's confidential, so.
It's confidential?
That's what Randy's trying to, this should not be discussed in public.
We should not be discussing.
Well, here's my question.
Sure.
Ki- can the mileage being covered during that time save on wear and tear on the patrol vehicles?
Well, I think what you need to do is give us some time to evaluate how this is going, and how long it's going to be. We're in the beginning stages of this.
Yeah.
So, uh, what, you know, you all asked last year for us to look outside the box, and that's what we've done.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is because of staffing.
Yeah.
And the, you know, it's, last year I asked for an extra police officer, because we are exactly where I told you we would be last year.
Yeah.
We lost an officer who passed away. We had an officer who resigned, and now we're back in the same boat we were. It's like deja vu all over again. But, you know, we're getting a few applications in, but it's very hard. I mean, we offer good pay, we offer good schedule, and people just are not jumping departments like they were. So that has slowed down some, but the applicant pool is not out there. We get fifty a day on Indeed, but it's, it's nobody that has any experience or anything like that. To hire somebody and put them through the academy and all that, it's about fifty grand.
Yeah, that's right.
So, when you start burning your staff out, when you have limited staff, then you have to look for those things. So I talked with the sheriff and said, hey, what's the chances that at some point in the day you could supply some coverage for us? Sheriff Polkey, who was, worked for me in Camden, and his chief deputy who worked for me in Camden, and his captain who worked for me in Camden, you know, he was like, you know what, we've got people that are out there, and we can give you a hand. And he says, at this point, we will do it as part of your tax assessment, so there's no charge for those hours that they cover. We have staff that rotates all different hours of the day and night, and they're willing to help us out when we need it. So we're evaluating that week by week, I go through and I look at the numbers of responses. I look at times during the day where we, the total complaint volume is, uh, like around one percent, so I can judge what time we need that coverage for. So, like I said, I don't wanna get into the security aspects of it, uh, because, you know, there is a response time difference. If somebody's out late at night and they're in Union Friendship or wherever, but we have safeguards put into that. I've talked with Tim Carroll, we have a great countywide mutual aid agreement. Chief Carroll said, hey, if something's happening and the deputy's tied up and I've got crew on, and there's an incident in Penn Bay, we'll just roll. And I said, you don't have to call me, just roll the people, and then I can respond, I have officers who live fairly close, anytime we can do call out with that. The same thing with Camden.
Thank you for your honesty, Randy, I appreciate it.
No, and, look, I was talking to John today, I have a son and daughter-in-law that live here in Rockport, they wanna stay living here, I get it. You know, you look at your tax bill, scares the hell out of you. Thank God my sister's got a couple of places, and she's very kind and gives a good, a good deal on rent.
She's a good landlord.
She's a good landlord. I get it, you know, you've got people here that wanna stay here, and we have to.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, it's, it's. Randy, when you talk about difficulty in getting new officers, when they do join, do they sign a contract that they will stay for some years? We can't really contract them, but once we put them through the police academy, there's about a fifty-thousand-dollar payback. If they go to another department, they have to pay that, and it, uh.
They do where the department does.
The department they go to, so.
Okay.
So I won't name any names, but I had an officer that was working for Camden, went through the academy, and just after the academy, a position, a desired position they wanted, opened up in another agency. And I get it, she wanted to go to that agency because it offered what she wanted to do eventually, which is get back into the schools. Rockland paid me fifty thousand dollars, so we put that back into a training reserve. So if we need to purchase out an officer from another agency, but it, it costs us that much. By the time you outfit them, you train them, we have to pay overtime while that officer works in the FDO program, field training officer, because they have to be assigned to somebody, so you're paying double the wages. Right now, we are, everybody's trying to pick up a little extra. I can tell you that myself, I worked, uh, two weeks straight, I worked a thirty-hour shift each week, that's coming in and staying in for thirty hours. But that was because we needed coverage in both towns. And it's not a steady diet that I want, but that's the things we have to do. I usually try to burn up my vacation time in November, this year I've just, I've gotta be around because the need is there. And when you are short-staffed, you burn your officers out quick with them pulling up the extra duty. And overtime is great, but you only want so much of it, so, those are all things that we're doing.
We should probably focus on capital.
Yeah, I can go on and on, but I did wanna just throw out there that the other thing about working together, try doing that. We came up with a great plan with both agencies, the officers had agreed to a figure that if they were to cover both towns, state law put us in a bind because they said you can't do that, you have to pay them premium rate. So that went out the window, that's when I started talking to the sheriff, so that's what we have with that.
Well, let's hope you get your deer this year.
Yeah, something will work.
I'd be happy if we just found two cops to hire, but if you get some deer, fine, whatever.
I hired one out of my tree stand last year, which is.
This is true, this is true, very effective, very effective. All right, so.
That was it, I'm getting out of here.
Well, don't get too comfortable, don't get too comfortable. Uh, let's talk about the harbor. Uh, so the harbor float systems are part of, also part of our, our, our float replacement schedule.
Are we skip, skipping over buildings and grounds?
Oh, yes, well, we can't forget Glenn, Glenn, I couldn't see Glenn, 'cause he came in right behind, he's behind you there, so. With, with buildings and grounds, we have two vehicles, we have a van, and then one of Randy's former cruisers that has been repurposed into the Glenmobile, I suppose, is what we're gonna call it. It is on its last limbs, and so it will, that will soon depart, and the vehicle that is cycling out of the police department will become the new Glenmobile. So, we're hoping that has a lot more life left in it, but that's not necessarily reflected here in this replacement schedule, so, again, there's some of these things that are, again, sort of more in flux, but when that happened, we weren't exactly sure, and we're hoping it's sooner than later, because there's some issues with the current Glenmobile, as it is.
John, when, when did we start providing vehicles for the Buildings and Grounds Department?
From the outset, uh, we had, uh, when that department started, in fact, that was the year that that vehicle had, had cycled out. You know, the challenge is, we had created a, a department and put responsibilities for maintenance and upkeep, and if we were to have kept, uh, not provided that vehicle, we would have been in the, really in the business of providing mileage and, and the so forth. And I wanna say that was twenty-twenty-two, I think it was the twenty-twenty-two budget year, which was the first year. Three years, I think that's about three years, yeah, so, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Because Glenn came out of Public Works, I mean, it was sort of a way of taking someone with a shield set.
I'm just thinking about these added expenses in the town.
Yeah.
When you start adding vehicles and getting bigger and bigger, that's all.
It was, it was a conversation point with the Budget Committee of, and, and again, it's, it, you know, we would have sold it, we would have gotten probably two thousand dollars from the, from the firm, from the car company, you know, the car dealer that, it, 'cause it was an already. It, cause it was an already, well, like, used vehicle, and we weren't going to get much back for it, so. We had to either that or you end up paying mileage, so, uh, you know, that was the choice.
Or, or paying outside contractors. I mean, what Glenn and his group does is, up till then, we were hiring outside contractors to come in. Never getting things done when we needed them done. People not looking long-term at improvements that would sort of save us money in the long run. So having Glenn and, and his assistant has really made a big difference.
I don't disagree, we have a beautiful looking town.
No, it's not about the beauty. It's not about the beauty, it's about the cost effectiveness of keeping these buildings and the grounds maintained.
They look beautiful, and we have a beautiful looking town. I don't disagree on that, it's just, you have to pay for it.
Okay, let's go to harbor.
Wait a minute, Glenn got off pretty easy.
Well, Bill said it's beautiful. What more do you want, Doug, for crying out loud?
It's not even in the budget for this year.
I think, just looking forward to, like, kind of what Bill was talking about, all the vehicles.
Yeah.
In here, in CIP, he talks about getting a truck also. So then we're gonna end up with a cruiser, a truck, and a van for two man groups.
Again, we're not talking about twenty twenty-seven, one. Two, we have a lot of time before we get to that place. We gotta see how this cruiser works. We gotta make sure it's fit. We got. There's a lot that has to go before we worry about what happens two years from now. It's same idea as the ambulance. So, there's a lot of, and, and, or the spares. There's a lot of things that will, that will happen in between that time. We're not talking about a net increase of vehicles, though. We're talking about the same number of vehicles, we're just a question of who's driving what and where.
So we're not adding any vehicles this year?
We're, we're replacing vehicles, but we're not adding vehicles.
This year.
This year.
Purchasing here.
That's right.
What are we replacing for vehicles?
So we've, uh, we're almost there, so, I don't wanna, I don't, can we, can we get through Abby? I know, I don't want to ruin the surprise, Craig.
Abby needs a vehicle for the.
No, 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 no.
It's a boat.
It's, it's, it's a boat, yeah, exactly. It's one of those amphibious vehicles, maybe, I don't know, yeah, yeah.
Abby, Abby's hiding back.
So we got. So going to the harbor, uh, so obviously, we have a, we have a, a, a replacement schedule for our floats. Our floats are, obviously, they're, they're very expensive items. They last a long time, but you need to have a regular rotation for these as well. Um, you can see it here, our next, our next purchase right now is, uh, B and C floats, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. That's not a number that's going to come out of this coming year's budget. We're gonna talk about that again in just a second. But the idea is that we have to, uh, obviously have these on a regular rotation. How, how old are those, was twenty?
Twenty, twenty.
Here, come up to the microphone.
We'll leave you, leave you alone, yeah.
They are twenty years old now. And, yeah.
And showing every bit of that wear?
Yeah, they, they are. I mean, I think, just like the, um, whom, the fathers before me, I should say, or mothers before me. Did a, a great job in, in the boat, in the type of the boat we have. It's aluminum hull. Um, we've had some repairs on it, but that, it's a bit of a tank, and we're not really gonna have to do much to it. Bearing, you know, any more, um, electrolysis or something like that. Um, and the floats as well, I mean, they were sort of top of the line when they went in. It, uh, it was the composite decking, the first composite decking. So if you were to take a hose to those, to that top of the deck, you get covered in plastic, so you deal with then, and I shouldn't have said that. Shouldn't have said that too loud. Uh, it does have the wear and tear and the microplastics and all the things that then slough off, um, which is not great. And, uh, then mold gets in, and then the under, under laminate gets warped, and there we go from there. Um, and with this, you know, our, our new strategic harbor plan, which is coming down the line, we want to make sure that we're not. Let's see, how do I put this? Spending, you know, town money when we can spend sort of grant money and sort of other funding to come up with, with this. You know, to, to make that a reality. So there's a lot of people behind the scenes working really hard, trying to make, you know, this project a reality. So the CIP plan is, you know, basically what we would have to do without all of that. So let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that all that comes to fruition, and we don't have to necessarily, you know. We're, we're, it's prudent planning, but let's hope that we can, you know, find other ways.
That's right. Okay. All right, thanks, Abby.
Yep.
So let's talk about year one. So, I don't want to, so Craig, you could, I don't know if you want to do a drum roll or whatever, we'll just go right to it, but. This is what year one looks like. How, so how does this impact us? So we color-coded this on the screen?
It's page ten.
It's page ten, but we didn't have any color coding on the page, so if you want to look to the, the screens in here, that might be helpful. So, the white sections are those that are part of, um, um, they're, they're, they're part of, they're part of that, that vehicle replacement. Um, that will level, sort of level impact the budget that, that Megan's described on numerous, numerous occasions.
So they're coming out of reserves?
No, those, the three white ones will be lease purchase agreements for public works.
The green is, are the, the items that would have budget impacts for the coming year. There would be either new items or, or, you know. There'd be new items as part of the budget. The pink, or I guess purple, uh, is the replacement of those floats. Again, those are items, we have that hundred and fifty thousand in reserve, so that is not an item that would come out of the, uh, of the budget. So, though the bottom line here of what will be in the fiscal twenty-seven budget, or what will be proposed to be at this time in the fiscal twenty-seven budget. It's, looks on here, two point seven five eight, uh, million. It's actually two point six, um, uh, eight million. Now that is, uh, you know, obviously, that's an impactful number. Um, but in terms of the new items, really, those are, the items in green are the numbers that are sort of the deltas of what would change the bottom line of that budget. That white, those white numbers largely operating on a flat number from what existed in the pre, in the current year. So whether you're looking at a taser replacement of six thousand dollars, or fire hose replacement of sixty-eight hundred, those would be new items. Now, that doesn't mean there are areas elsewhere in the fire budget, the police budget, or, or wherever it might be that. Um, might be cuts to make room for those, but in terms of capital items that are new to the budget, that's what, that's where they, that's where they'll live. Would understand that? Or the sidewalk projects?
John, the, uh, the Western Star truck, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's the one truck that we're gonna have for what, like fourteen years or something like that?
Yeah, that'd be, right, the seven yard.
How, how much of that is actually gonna go into the, again, the cost for the taxpayers this year, under the lease?
For that one, it will be fifty-five thousand.
And we, when we look at that truck. Going back to what I was saying before, you have all these vehicles.
Yep.
Like, what's, what's going away in replace with that truck? Or is that just going back in and then something else is gonna be parked?
Theoretically, it would be the oldest spare that we would get rid of. Assuming that the oldest spare is the one that's in the worst condition. Sometimes the oldest one is not the one that's in the worst condition, and we would get rid of a different one.
And how many spares are we aiming for right now for public works?
So we would aim for two spares of the big and two spares of the five fifties. So that would be selling off two of what's here, plus the one that's replaced, so three.
So we have a twenty fifteen Western Star.
Yep.
Which is still frontline.
That's right.
Well, no, you'd get rid of the three freight liners. Well, you'd get rid of essentially.
Okay.
Yeah, cause you want to get rid of two, right.
Go back to the two thousand four spare.
Assuming, right, assuming that is, right.
Are we changing our sh- I, I call it shelf life of our vehicles based on our investments we've done for maintenance? Cause last year's capital improvement, we put a mate, like, we invested in a lift.
Yeah.
To do in-house maintenance.
Yeah, so Lyft just got installed earlier this month, finally. So, again, like everything else that we do in these budgets, it doesn't, it takes time, right? So we also set aside, um, as part of that same purchase, a tire changer. That hasn't been purchased yet. Um, they've been looking at different models and different types and different, and it's been around the barn. Uh, but that is, you know, so that purchase hardly hasn't completed yet. Um, the mechanic who is, is pursuing his ASC certification, so he can do the, the, uh, the stickers and, and do additional mechanic work. That's also to come, but that hasn't, hasn't come to fruition yet. So, I still thi- it, it's still, it's still the goal is to, to pursue, but, um, hasn't, hasn't, whether, because of illness and absence, that hasn't happened yet.
And was the rationale to be able to change the time periods within which we had to repli- extend the time periods within which we had to replace vehicles? Or was it just to do in-house the maintenance rather than pay outside?
I mean, I think, I think it's, it's both. It's, it's, I think you, you, when you have the capacity to do more repairs in-house. To be able to be more hands-on with your own equipment, I think that naturally leads to the ability to potentially, uh.
Extend the life.
Yeah, extend that life, and I think you continue to look at that. And in fact, Mike Young and I had this conversation earlier this week about, is there better, you know, is the, are these timetables the right ones? Is there more room? Is there more time? It's something he said, I, you know, that he was gonna be looking at. So I don't think, in terms of Lyft, we've had enough information to be able to say, but I think it's, I think it's good evidence moving in the right direction to be able to push there.
I mean, I would just say, if we're making a six-figure investment in something for maintenance.
Yeah.
Like, there needs to be a six-figure, six-figure return to why we're doing that investment. That's, that's, and, and I would have, I would have assumed, I'm, I'm jumping like way around the place.
Yeah.
But I was on the budget committee last year, but I would have asked the question, we're gonna put the six-figure lift in.
Yeah.
We've got someone to like do the work now, right?
We do.
We, we do. We have somebody ready to do the work now. What, but what you're talking about, we aren't looking for return, a dollar-for-dollar return on investment. What we're looking for is safety. So the existing lift that we had was not going to pass certification for another year. So if we didn't have that lift, then we'd be putting all of our work out, and that would have been a tremendous cost. So we were in a place where we were forced effectively to replace that lift in that building. Now, how it works out and can we get additional, I, I think what I look at is, can we get additional value added out of it? As opposed to, can we at least meet what we did net before? Can we do more? Can we work with our police, you know, police vehicles? Can we work with our fire trucks? Can we find ways, you know, to answer Bill's, you know, Bill's point earlier? We have these vehicles. If we're able to do more of that work ourselves and keep that out of running it down to Key Ford or running it some other places. Makes us more efficient, brings, you know, keeps the labor cost down. That to me is probably closer where we could get to the dollar-to-dollar, you know, number that you were talking about, Craig, but I don't think. That's not, you know, we're looking from the safety perspective most of all.
John, on these numbers you're looking at, I mean, uh, if we come at the end of this budget process, we have a huge number again.
Yeah.
And we're talking about going back to taxpayers for fifteen or twenty percent increase in expenses. Is, we do have an opportunity here, based on your conversation with Mike. If we move the Western Star two hundred and eighty thousand dollars another year.
Yeah.
The earth is not gonna, again.
It won't come off axis, hopefully. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, the thing that, in, in talking about that is, the other thing that happens is that. When you move one, everything moves with it. So you have to somewhat move the whole schedule. You know, you have to augment the whole schedule, and everything gets pushed out, however many years, will be fifteen years out, twenty years out.
I'm just talking about the science.
No, you're right.
The science has determined how long these vehicles are gonna last.
We will not have a fifteen to twenty percent budget increase this year.
Yeah.
Is that you say that fourteen years dragging around bucket loads of salt for a long time on a vehicle? Just so you know.
What's that mean?
When they're using assault sanding trucks, they do deteriorate.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not debating that. I'm just saying that the question is whether you can go another year or two years, the piece of equipment, to save the taxpayers money.
But you're not talking, you're talking about the two thousand four vehicle going another year. It's really, you're taking.
These up here.
Well, no, it's, this is the new one that would replace the two, you know, whatever.
This is what you're recommending for the capital improvement budget, right? So it's in this year.
I got that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's very tempting, and I'm not saying, you know, we don't know where we're gonna end up on, on these, and it's tempting to do something like that. You know, I, if you look at the, um, road construction budget, the one point seven million, it's really tempting to cut a couple hundred thousand out of it.
I'm, I'm way too far in the weeds for this point in discussions.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
I know that, I'm just saying.
Yes, but it's tempting to do those kinds of things.
Yeah, and I don't want.
And yet you end up in a situation where you, you just kick the can down the road, and it ends up costing you more money.
No, I understand, but those are all the discussions.
Yep.
The taxpayers are asking us why.
Absolutely, yep, and we want to be able to answer those questions.
And I, and, and that's, you know, really what about, what tonight's about, right, is that, that, that you can have those conversations, and then, you know, what does that mean? So maybe we come back and say, okay, this is what it means, in, in real dollars and cents, to kick that out a year. Does it get us fifty-five thousand, or is it something different? You know, I think that's, those are valuable conversations for us all to have, you know, so.
Well, and it is interesting, because it really is a fifty-five thousand dollar budget impact, right?
Right, it's not too eighty.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, follow-up sort of on Bill said, and up at the thirty thousand from low. The thing that's somewhat troubling is, you know, I appreciate the exercise we're going through tonight.
Yeah.
But it's sort of the same exercise we've gone through in the past. And.
Yeah.
Uh, we, I guess, some of us on the budget committee have been trying to look at a real paradigm shift. In how we approach the budget.
Yep.
And instead of just doing it the same way every year.
Yeah, let me answer that. We're professionals who do our job.
Sure.
For twenty years, I've done this job. For twelve years, you've been the finance director here. And, and I don't dispute the ability of the budget committee, or the select board, or any elected person. I was elected person, I sat up here, I had my own opinions. I don't, I don't begrudge any of you to have different opinions than what I might have, or what. But what we have to do is deal with the facts of what we work with, whether it's department heads, managers, finance directors, whatever they are. This is the world that we live in. This is the world we live in. We wouldn't go into, let's say, an operating room and tell a surgeon how, where to cut and where not to cut. We wouldn't tell a, a, someone in finance to say, well, I would buy that, but sell that. I'm a layperson. Now I pay taxes just like the rest of you. I go through the same issues that you all have. There's things that I don't like that are in here, no doubt. There's things all of us disagree with, with how this works as, as staffers. I, I think my point, Doug, to, to, to your, you know, question, and, and I appreciate the desire for a paradigm shift. I agree that, you know, it, you know, the feeling of, of where these, where we've been the last few years isn't comfortable. It's also not comfortable to have to pay the same pri- the, a, a rising price for coffee. It's not, it's not comfortable paying a rising price of, of ground beef. It's not great to see what the cost of a truck should be now as opposed to what it was even just four years ago. So we have to confront those, and we're asked by all of our residents to provide services. You say, and I, and I, you know, do we need a black road? No, we don't need a black road, but we have to be safe. We have to, we have to balance those items. And so we're asked to provide services, keep people safe, fires come, Jason shows up, and all of the crew shows up. That's our job, right? We're just telling you, from the world we do, and, and the world that we are professionals within, this is what it takes to operate this, this, this whole entity. If there's ways to do it better, we're open. Tell us. Let's talk about it. It's, it's a, it's a public body, it's a select board, it's a budget committee. We're gonna, we're gonna debate these things. But, you know, I don't want to, it lo- lose the point that the process that we go through. Whether it's line-by-line in March, or talking about it here in October, it's a public process that involves more than just all of us, right? It involves thirty-seven hundred people that we all have to care for. And we, you know, we're responding to people who want to say, well, how do we cap taxes? How do we do this? How do we do that? So, I, I hear you, and I, and I hear the, the need for, to doing something different. What I'm saying to you is, there's a reason why we operate for, to make sure, in, in our minds, we're doing what we can to keep the taxes low. Randy described a whole bunch of reasons how he's trying to keep staffing low, even though we're short two officers. Jason's talking about how he's gaining revenue over the top. Again, these are in evidence and reflection of conversations we had here in March. So, this is, there's a, there's a reaction to what you guys are saying. We've been working for six months to try to react to that paradigm, the need for paradigm shift. I don't know that the paradigm shift that happens will be what we all think it is, but we're hearing you. And, and maybe we disagree on the details of what that might be, but we, we hear you, we want to get there. I don't want to pay you the same tax bill that I just paid. I'm sure none of you do. But we've got to also be professionals providing services, too. That's, that's the, that's the balance that we have to strike.
And John, I, I don't disagree with the thing you're saying, and I appreciate all the work that's done by all the departments. I don't have any disagreement. I'm just saying that last year's budget was passed by, what, thirty-something votes?
Thirty-nine votes.
There's a lot of people in this town, you know, that wanna see something happen here, that's all.
Sure.
We, we need to do something.
That's why we're, why we're doing this tonight.
Yeah.
John, I, like, Bill, I agree with everything you say.
Yeah.
But there's also alternate facts. And we had a great presentation at our last Budget Committee meeting where our town was compared to Wiscasset and Booth Bay Harbor. And it seems like some other towns that are very similar to Rockport are able to provide those same services, but at several million dollars less.
Well, there wasn't enough, I was at that same meeting, and there wasn't enough information in the deep, I mean, we don't yet have any of that in writing. We heard some oral numbers. But I think until, you know, until we can compare apples to apples, we're not, it's not like we think we've got the perfect answer as to how to run a town. I mean, I think it's really important to listen to what we all, why we're all here. And this is an important part of the process. And the fact that it's a five-year plan, we're not ruling now on what we're gonna do after this budget year. But we, there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. And that's not to say that we can't do it better. We can't find cost savings. That's,
Right.
that's the challenge for all of us here.
That's right.
And we, we need to follow up, we will, on those numbers.
Absolutely. I would love to see.
Some things we can find about different departments and how to do it differently.
And I would, I would, one thing I would ask is, I would love to have had an opportunity to look at those numbers and comment. And I, and I think it's certainly fine for individual members to do work of the Budget Committee. I think ideally they would be authorized and approved and there's a vote and all that. But I understand everyone's working the different ways. But I think that there is some benefit that could come from sitting down with either Megan or I and talking about what we have here. I mean, I think that there is, there's, there's plenty of room for disagreement, right? There's plenty of room of different ways to do it. And I, and I, we certainly grant all that. I respect everyone's opinions here. But I think it's dangerous to assume one town's, you know, line is different, is, is the same as the other. We just talked about the way that the Camden manages their firing EMS. They're literally across the line from us. And they couldn't do thing, they could do, they, it's hard to argue them doing them more differently than we are.
John, that's why we gotta get more.
That's what we gotta do.
We need to get more details.
I agree.
Before you get into the discussion.
I, I, I didn't think I was right to speak here. I understand what you guys are all saying, and I think you all feel good, but this gentleman, which I don't know at all, gave you a thirty-nine number vote. It would've been thirty-eight if I knew. And I'm one of very many people in town which would've come through that vote and known.
Yeah.
And done the same thing. They're doing you a favor.
Absolutely. This is.
Excuse me, let me finish. Thank you. If they voted the budget down, where would we be then?
We'd be working off of last year's budget.
That's not anywhere you want to be.
No, definitely not.
And I, and I'm not gonna take your time.
Definitely not.
I've been in this town my whole life.
Yep.
And it would've been thirty-eight or thirty-nine.
And continuing with my role of being the most annoying person in this, in the room.
I'm defeated.
Yeah, I think it's kind of interesting that during this meeting tonight, the. Huh?
You gotta speak.
Microphone. Oh, yeah, sorry. You know, it's just sort of interesting that the, mostly the Select Board, John, and Megan have all sort of been defending the process. But it's been the Budget Committee that's been asking sort of the, the tough questions.
We're not defending the process, right? We're, have you heard, nobody, we are open to new ideas and new ways of doing this. It does involve getting into the details. It's easy to talk at the thirty thousand foot level about a paradigm shift. And I think what John was, John Duke was saying is, he's, he's the professional town manager that the Select Board hired. We went through quite a process to find the best town manager for Rockport. And John has now been with us for four years. And he came from other towns with a lot of experience. I don't know how to run a town. I'm learning, I'm learning a lot about our budget process. I'm learning from both John and Megan and our other department heads who have expertise in these areas. The taxes are really frustrating and nobody is defending that. Nobody's saying, we love the tax rate we have. We did hear loud and clear that our taxpayers and our voters are very upset. So that's why we're doing this process this year and trying to take advantage of everybody's ideas. So I think we need to at least take on a good faith basis that we're trying to work this together. Nobody is defending anything. We're just learning and listening.
John, I'm glad I annoyed you, 'cause that keeps up my record, so.
You're doing a good job, Doug.
Perfect.
Sorry.
I wanted to comment if Doug's done talking. So John, you haven't talked at all, or Megan, about the cost of deferring some of these investments? I'd love to hear you talk a little bit about that. You know, for instance, the big one, the, you know, deferring road construction.
Right.
What happens to the cost if you kick that can down the road?
Yeah.
Then there's one other point I would make while we're, while I have the microphone, which is, you know, the cost of the EMS department came up. And somebody mentioned that it was on the warrant, was overwhelmingly approved. But the thing that wasn't on the warrant is what the cost, what the impact financially. I don't think on the, I don't remember the actual article, but it probably just said, are you in favor of?
The budget.
What, what did it, do you remember? Was there a budget increase to it? So voters approved
The cost.
The cost of the EMS.
Yeah.
That cost showed up two fiscal years ago, started to show up, and the full cost showed up last year. So we're just now starting to realize the financial impact. So some of the big jumps, you know, there are some significant drivers in there. We had a long history with past Select Boards of, of reducing the cost of the road construction, probably to make the numbers work. That is defer, now deferred, it kicked it down the road.
Right.
It's costing us more now to get that back on schedule. I'll let, I'll let you take it from there, John.
So, yeah, and that's the easiest place to point to. So we talk about, we had, over a ten-year period, just before I came, came back, we had, we had paved a quarter of the number of miles of road that we should have over a ten-year period. So what does that do? That kicks all those cans down the road. And by the time you get to the next, that, that next road, the cost is, has increased. The ditching is worse. The culverts are worse. You're in a situation where you're not just simply overlaying, you're ripping up. And so we had in three different instances that occurred. Alexander Ledgewood Drives, that, that former subdivision. We had the Park Street slash Meadow Street that we ground up and repaved and had to do the same thing on, on Main Street. The cost on Park Street was six times the cost it would've been if we had just simply overlaid the road. So, and, and we, and Main Street was about a third, it would've been three times, or a third of what we ended up paying. This is, this deferred maintenance has real costs. And so we can, we can talk about different ways to save the taxpayers' money. But there's money you pay me today, and there's money, there's more money you pay me tomorrow. And that's the problem. I've lived here, as you all know, I've lived here. I don't want to be in my seventies and see, damn, why didn't we do this? Why did we try to save a buck now when we needed, when we really needed to invest? Now, I say that recognizing what we've been through the last few years. And what we're talking about here is not a continuation of what the last few years has brought. But it is certainly a situation where we're applying methodology and reason and logic to, to come to a place where we say, this is why we replaced it on this schedule. And that's why we're having this conversation. There will be a budget discussion that will occur in March and, and we'll, we'll do, go, get to go through this again, and it will be valuable. And I think we'll all feel better with asking those questions and having more refined answers to, to the questions that are raised, some of which are even raised tonight. But the idea that somehow, I don't wanna throw around number, or, you know, throw around slogans and make us all feel good of, well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna toss out the budget. That doesn't make anybody, that's not gonna do anything. What's gonna really fix this problem is rolling our hands, rolling our sleeves up and talking about how can we do this wisely? And thinking about not just today, but five years, ten years, twenty years down the road. Because if I could go back and, you know, talk to that town manager ten years ago, I would've said, the last thing you should be doing is trying to get a zero percent budget in the face of a situation where paving is much less than it is now.
I learned my lesson on deferring road pavement when I was on the Select Board quite a few years ago because we'd fallen so far behind, we had to take out a bond
Yes.
to catch up. I guess sort of my question is, well, wait a minute, we caught up, but now we're falling behind.
You did not catch up. That bond didn't even begin to touch. That bond was at a very expensive period of time, watching that bond money just disappear because of waiting so long.
Anyway, I learned my lesson about that, John.
And, and no, I appreciate that. And I think that's, look, I, I think we've all, we've all bought homes. We've all, you know, we've all looked at the cost of everything that has occurred over the last five years. There, I wish I could go back five years ago and say, if only, right? But here we are. Here we are. We sit with answers and, and decisions to make in six months, or less than six months, I guess, four, four, four or five months. And, and what we're, what this, that this evening is about, is about a lay of the land. Again, we don't have to make decisions tonight. I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing Rick. I'm hearing all you guys. This is, this is good feedback. This is something we all need to be thinking about as we're going into that process. And I don't believe we're defending what it is. I think we're saying, this is why we are where we are. But I think there are always new ways. And, and whether it is a dollar-for-dollar, I'm not saying that's, that Craig's wrong in saying that. Maybe we should be looking at that and figuring out, how do we, how do we justify it as a different way? That's the way these things work. And, and for the last six months, our staff have been working tirelessly to respond to things that may have been throwaway comments six months ago. And, and, and taking seriously what you all are saying. So understand that, understand we're, we're hearing you. And, and let's, let's just continue to work together, okay?
I was just gonna say, you know, I think the thing that I take out of this is what, you know, it's, I totally appreciate, and I think you do great work on, on this new capital improvement plan. It looks a lot better than last year's. And everything, I think, is, you know, you know this way better than me. What I'm, what's hard for me, and I think probably a lot of us on the Budget Committee to understand, is what's the impact of? And, and it's not just a question of, you know, this is what it takes to provide the same level of service. It's, now that this truck is more expensive, do, do, does the town really wanna be at that level of service? And it's not, you can't flex every category up and down so easily.
No.
But, and that's a hard thing to understand. I think that's when, you know, if I, I push back, or any of us push back on,
Yeah.
can we push that purchase out? It's really, we understand that may not equate to the same level of service or something. But is that something the town would prefer to save, you know, a little bit of money, you know?
Right.
The town ultimately needs to decide what, what it wants to pay for.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think the time, you know, when, when we're here in March and we're looking at, you know, that line, and we're talking about, is that twenty-twenty-seven Western Star the right way to go and, and sell off the two thousand four Freightliner? Okay, what, and I think there's a, there's a better con, that's a, that's a March conversation, not an October conversation. But it's, the idea tonight is to get your mind thinking, right? And get the, no judgment, no, no disagreement, but okay, think about it. That's all, you know? And I think that's, that's all we're, that's all, if we got that done, then mission accomplished tonight. It doesn't mean we have to agree, but we, we're, we're thinking about it.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we do better? Is there a better way to get to that same desired result? Don't know. Let's think about it, so, okay.
Also note, we have twenty-three more slides.
Yeah, but can I just clarify, can I just clarify one, one thing for everybody in the room? Just so you know, the Select Board, this is our first look at this capital improvement plan. We have not, we have not participated in creating this any more than you guys have. So this is, we're inviting you into this process very early on. You're looking at it right with us. There's no pre, pre-plan. There's no secret cabal behind the curtain.
No.
John is giving us exactly what he described, which is, and Megan, they're, they're professionals. They've put together a plan, and now it's time for us to look at it. So that's what we're doing.
We can blame John.
Always. Always, Bill.
We can blame John, is what you're saying.
If you want.
That would be any different than usual, right?
See, we're doing everything the same.
When Denise said, I'm, I'm not gonna sit up here, I, I knew why she said that. She doesn't know the rotten tomatoes from the back.
I would also say, though, like, if you guys wanna work together as committees and Select Board, like, there's been a number of occasions that there's been a negative response when Doug's talked. And like, I feel like we need that respect. And that's, I'm just gonna leave it there. Don't worry about me.
Don't worry about me.
I know, but I'm just saying, like, if we don't want, like, the stopping of the talking, mid-conversations, the negative reactions, like, we can work together, absolutely. But, like, it needs to be mutual.
Yeah, and I guess I'd just say in response, I appreciate that. And we haven't, I, I think I, this is sort of my watchword, is to assume good intentions. I, I just feel like we're, we're all doing our best here, and I, it might be frustrating for some, but I, I hear what you're saying, Craig.
Okay. Well, Clay had the right idea. So let's go to slide eighteen. And you know what? Forget it. We're gonna go right to slide nineteen. Yeah, don't get too excited now.
That's different.
I know, sorry. So this is, this is a, a summary. This is sort of gauging out some of the building and land items. They were in the previous, the, the, the first category of fiscal year ending twenty-seven. Those were included in that section. And this is pushing that, you wanna know what, what page that's on, Helen?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. There you go. I knew, I had a feeling you were looking for the page number.
Yep.
So. Yeah, you got it. No, we're, we're, we're here to help. So, yeah, so this is really pushing out some of those expenditures and some of the other building, land, and space planning capital items over the next handful of years, okay? So again, you're looking at the, the items here, the Marge Jones road repairs, the building reserve, the two items for Russell Avenue sidewalk, and then the float B and C replacement. And then next year, there's some, some other, you know, we're into pickleball reserve, pickleball maintenance.
Tennis, what?
Tennis and pickleball court. Oh, boy, there we go. Mechanic Street sidewalk, that's in fiscal twenty-eight, fiscal twenty-nine. We have diesel fuel holding tanks, commercial float replacement, our new items. And then fiscal year thirty, we're back to just the road repairs and building reserve for the library. Now, I didn't plan on going through each of these individually, but Ben is here, Jason's here. I don't know if there's any questions or thought. Each of those have individual sections that are listed here. And if you see the capital item number, you can use that as sort of a, a guide to figure out where to go to. So for example, twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-four is the library building reserve. And if you can just scroll through, you'll eventually see where that comes in, which is on page.
Is that right in charts?
Oh, yes, in the chart. Thank you, Megan. Always a step ahead. Thank you, Megan. And again, you know, we don't need to, no weeds, but, you know, if there's questions, now's a good time. Ben's here, Jason's here. Abby's here to ask and answer questions about pickleball. Not really. Others?
I mean, I think just one of the, one of the things I wanna bring up is, you know, even like sidewalk repair.
Yep.
That obviously costs money to maintain infrastructure. This is a significant cost to maintain sidewalks. These are some of the costs we have to look at when we're adding infrastructure, like when we just added a new sidewalk. Although the initial startup cost might've been X, you're gonna have X again in a certain number of years.
Yeah.
So if we continue to struggle with even being able to maintain or repair sidewalks progressively along the way because of personnel not having a big enough public works. progressively along the way because of personnel not having a big enough public works department, et cetera, that, that basically still means that we just have too much infrastructure for the town size, the, the facilities that we have.
So one, I don't wanna go too deep in this, but one thing that we're trying to do is, uh, create a complete streets policy. Uh, Ryan here has been working on it with us for a while, and we're trying to get the pathways committee to look at, not to jump ahead, but the road construction plans for the coming years, and to start working on those streets and figure out what's needed. Where do you need a sidewalk? Where do you not need a sidewalk? Where do you really just wanna paint fog lines and and have a wider area for someone can ride a bike, or push a stroller, and not worry about a, a raised sidewalk? Some places, the speed such, you really wanna have that raised sidewalk. But it's, it's individual pieces. That policy hasn't been vetted yet to the point where it's going to the select board, but that's in process. Um, but part of your point, Clay, is a good one, which is, oh, it's a good one, Clay, but, but it's, but, sorry. I didn't was, I was trying to cut you out the knees on it. Um, but, but it's, it's a situation, I think, where we have to have like a comprehensive look at the whole thing, right? And I think that's, the items that you have here listed, um, over here on Russell Ave or Mechanic Street, those are issues that have popped up, that they're on Mike's radar because there've been complaints or been issues. That doesn't mean that they don't exist, or, you know, maybe it's one person, maybe it's three people. But at the same point, really, we need to have the same systematic approach that we're looking at everything. Let's be logical, treat everything the same way, through the same lens. How much is it really being used? How is it being used? I mean, I gotta be honest with you, I lived my whole life, I don't think I've ever walked on the sidewalk on Mechanic Street, ever.
Nobody does.
You know, I worked right down the middle of the road, and I haven't hit, yeah, thank goodness.
Yes, I walked on it a lot.
Well, you live faith, yes, that's true. You know, but, you know, those are situations, Bill's, in front of Bill's house is a great example of that, where I walked up the middle of, uh, Bill's street, I can't even tell how many times, but I never used the sidewalk.
You know why? There's no more sidewalk. You tore it all up.
So, anyway, there are places, you know, where and when does it make sense? Um, and the individual of these, that's something, just as we did with, uh, Main Street, will the bear, the merits of that will get discussed, and then, you know, whether eighteen inches get cut or not, Clay, I don't know, but I'll, I'll leave that to the wiser heads here to figure out. Hi, Helen.
Hi. Um, I noticed on the Russell Avenue and the mechanic, when the project description, they talk about new granite curbing and concrete, concrete. I haven't been on the pathways committee for a number of years now, but I was on it for about ten years. And it was decided ages ago that concrete and, uh, granite would only be within the immediate village area, not on these side streets. Has that policy changed?
I have, you know, so I've, I've heard word of that policy, but I've never actually seen it written. Uh, if you can put your fingers on it, I'd love to see it, honestly.
I got rid of all my pathways notes eleven years ago, but...
What I love to see is the cost of construction is so much lower with it, one versus the other, to be honest, so.
It didn't get to that. It was, it was a matter of cost.
Yeah, I appreciated you guys putting the lower numbers in for the asphalt.
Yes.
I love the lower cost, if we're, if it's going to happen, but, but I, I hear you. You know, if there's a policy and there's a desire, let's talk about that, but, yeah.
At least ten years ago.
I've heard that, though, yeah.
And I did, not, not to get too picky, but I, when you get to the sidewalks and everything, there's a lot of things I didn't recognize. I don't know who terms are being used. Somebody didn't look at a map, or, or what, but these are things that are in here are things that the pathways committee has, has talked about for fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that there's, yeah, and I, you know, the, the Main Street sidewalk was one of those, uh, some work on Old Rockland Road, you know, but, but I think there's a, there's a hope that we can take this new policy, take pathways, put them together, and maybe find some ways to improve pedestrian, bike, but also maybe limit the cost and and improve our ability to maintain them, you know, through four seasons. That's my hope, you know? But, and that makes Clay happy, too, and I, that's what I really want, so.
I see Russell's schedule included in the paving plan. Is there, how much like cost benefit is there to do them together, in roughly?
For neighbors, there's a great deal of benefit to have us out of your hair soon. Uh, well, that's, that's really the, the effort, is to try to pair up when paving needs to be done and mess up your neighborhood at once rather than do it in, in, in stages. We've talked about that with the Main Street sidewalk, about, well, can we do one and not the other? And it, you know, if there's drainage, yeah, you really have to.
That's, that's what I would assume.
Yeah. Um.
Well, here's the thing, though. Um, I've been one of those people that have been badgering you and Mike for years to improve the sidewalks and walking conditions on Russell Avenue. But now that I see, you know, the budget trouble that we're into, uh, you know, to be honest, when the time comes, I'll say, let's not do Russell Avenue this year. I'll save you two hundred and seventy-five thousand bucks.
Go. That's a paradigm right there. I love it, Doug.
Well, you know, uh, uh, that's fine. I get it.
But, but there is a value to having walkable downtowns and all that.
Yeah, you know, absolutely. I get that. Denise will tell you that I'm always a proponent to try to upgrade things a little bit and make them nicer. But, you know, there's the fact of the matter. It is what it is. You can still get by there. Uh, you know, putting it off a year isn't gonna make a big difference in terms of deferred maintenance.
Right.
The, I think, I generally agree with that, with the exception of that corner, Ron Russell, which I do think is, somebody's going to get killed there someday. It's, the peak cars whip around and it's blind. You, there's not, right now, with plants growing into it, there's not room to walk. So I guess my question is, is there, is there, can it be considered, like, is there an option just to see what doing just the corner would be from, like I say, do?
Uh, I wanna say half of the number for the rehabilitation, the repair. So the three fifty-four, um, and I think it's, I don't wanna speak for, for Mike, but, you know, that if, if it was asphalt and granite, it's about half that sixty-two thousand dollar number.
Right, okay.
And, and that's what I actually talked to Mike about. I said, look, you don't have to do all of Russell Avenue, you know, all the way out by my house. Um, you know, let's just take care of that corner, which frankly is dangerous.
It is. I agree, yeah.
We getting into March discussions here?
Yeah, pretty close. We're, the, the, we're rounding the bend here. I'm with you, Bill. All right, let's keep moving then. How about road construction? Again, we'll try to, we'll try to stay out of the weeds on this, but just in, in round numbers and basic terms, seventy-two miles of road in the town of Rockport, we operate on a ten year paving schedule. Simple math, that's seven-two point, seven-point-two miles of road, to be paved annually. Some years it's seven, sometimes it's seven-four. Sometimes it's not that amount because we don't have enough funded to, to cover it. Last year, you may recall, I did reduce the amount, uh, in my proposed budget to nine hundred and twelve thousand to limit the amount, to try to, again, get some relief. Um, but what we're proposing here is, and again, we're not proposing, it, it's just in the capital plan. If we're to stay on a seven-point-two, um, roughly mile schedule, this is what those five years would look like. So on top of the paving costs of that seven-point-two miles of road, you have culvert replacement, ditching, brush cutting, tree work, sign replacement, you know, the hay, uh, to, to, you know, basically seed back, what you've at, what you've ditched, those sort of things. So this is what the year-one paving schedule looks like as of today. Uh, it is, again, this can change between now and when you see this again. So, but don't be surprised if, you know, your favorite road is, is kicked to next year. We've had situations where roads have moved up two years in, in our, in our experience. So that's how this works. There are some associated projects that are somewhat addressed here. Warrington Street, there is a drainage project, and one of our, our stream crossings is on Warrington Street. So in the same way, you know, Walker mentioned about sort of that, um, dovetailing a couple of different projects at once. That's what we're trying to accomplish with Warrington Street. Uh, Porter Street, that intersection we discussed this last year, hoping to have the, the engineering done. The number here that's listed for other associated costs includes not just all of the work on South Street, but also the additional to fix that, that intersection. Now, that's a number as if we put that out to bid, and if we, you know, had others complete that, I think there's some savings we might be able to find there. So again, these are big picture numbers, they're not, I think we can maybe whittle that down a bit. Um, but the idea is seven-point-four-eight miles of road. You also have some dirt roads that are, are in here. We're gonna be doing some box cutting and trying to get, replace some road base. Um, it's a little soupy on Beauchamp Point, and, uh, need to, to fix those two spots. But again, we're only talking about fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand dollars. It's not, it's not paving, so.
Quick question.
Sure, Helen.
Um, about half, six lines, as is Main Street central to Harbor. Is that just that little section that goes down the hill?
Yeah, the hill. Yep.
Yes, yes, yeah, okay.
Now, that's one that might get put off, and it's part of, it's also related to the Harbor Strategic Plan. So there's, this is, this is where, you know, as we start to put these different pieces together, what fits, what doesn't, but that could be next.
That wouldn't be a paradigm shift.
I'm afraid that's not.
Boom.
I seem to remember a comment, I don't know, in a, a letter a while ago or something, that the paving costs this year were lower than expected. How does that factor into these numbers?
So we, um, do you remember when we put in one, yeah, we did one-ten. So we, we based off of what we previously paid, our, our, all of the bids we received, aside from the one we accepted, were all around a hundred, hundred and three dollars. So I don't totally feel, the work was great, we're very happy with the contractor. I would love for them to come back and pay the same price. I just don't, I don't wanna put us in a situation where now we're cutting roads and it's too early.
Yeah, but there's maybe ten percent of savings.
Exactly. Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, and we experienced that this year, some savings on.
Exactly, right.
And we wouldn't know that until we put the roads out to bid during construction season. So we wouldn't know that in time for the budget process.
What it does allow us to do, though, is allows us to get ahead. So we may be able, because we were under, to, to start nipping away at some of these other projects, that would be my hope. We also are hoping to get to a point where we're doing all of our prep work in the prior year and paving right away. So that would allow us to jump on paving sooner, um, rather than somewhat trying to rush to get all of our work done, so that way there's enough time for us to pave in, in a reasonable time period. That worked because it didn't rain this summer. Uh, but in a normal summer, we have normal precip, I don't know, I, I'd be a little nervous about that, so.
Another quick question.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, the Beauchamp Point Road.
Yep.
You point zero-nine miles dirt. I've walked, used to walk that quite a bit. Seems to be a little bit longer than that, but does part of it cover across private property? What part, what is this point zero-nine?
Some of it might be Calderwood Lane.
Yeah, it's, so if you go around the point, um, there's a section, I don't know how to describe it. We had, we had done some work right around the intersection with Chapel Road. And just beyond that, there was a section that had gotten pretty, yes, it had gotten a little soupy.
Okay, so that's what the zero-point-nine miles.
And there's another section on Chapel that we also need to address. Yeah, yep. So, all right, let's keep going. We'll try to get to slide twenty, or excuse me, twenty, twenty-three. Okay. So this is, this is where we start talking about some identified long-term needs. And this is a situation where there's, there's wide variation in the types of needs and the types of projects in this area. Some of these don't fit within five years. But frankly, we're not doing our job if we're not all here, and at least as I've put on your radar, there are concerns. Now, let me also say, some of these solutions are not yet vetted solutions. They're not yet, let's, let's go to print and send the bids out and ready to, you know, we're not at that point. The select board hasn't looked at and sat down and discussed this with any great, in any great depth. Um, for those of you who have looked through this, uh, we have, you know, we've gone through a process, and I'll talk about it. Um, but we're very early in this. So, you know, we've been talking about this for a number of years about a need to look at, at this building and some of the other town buildings, and so we're, we're finally at that point. But more work is to be done. And again, none of this is going, none of these items that I talk about from here forward are part of next year's budget. Okay, so let's, all the paradigms, everything, we're all good. Everything's happy. Have a mint, and, and let's move on. So, let, I just wanna talk about the process that we've, we've been engaging in.
Well, wait.
Have a mint, Doug. Okay, so, the building assessment process is, is such, in, in the spring, we engaged Maple Street Design. Uh, they're based in Camden. They've worked on municipal projects. They've been working with the town of Camden on, uh, some reworking of their public safety, uh, building, uh, fire department and police department. Work, Randy had, had great experience with them. And so Joe Rosillo, for anyone who knows Joe in the area, um, Joe was, uh, was eager to sit down and talk about really unique circumstance that we have. So we have four buildings. We're talking about the Opera House, which was built in the late eighteen nineties, the Public Works Building, which was built in nineteen eighty-seven, the Public Safety Building, which was built in nineteen sixty-four, and the Town Office Building, which was built, I believe, in nineteen ninety-seven.
Did you give us a page number so we can actually see it?
Oh, I, I could, but this isn't on any of the, this isn't on that. So, we're getting there, Helen. We're just, we're, we're, we're going. We're, we'll get there. Um, do you, but we do have the page for, with all of them listed on. I don't know if that's helpful.
Page forty-eight.
Sorry, what was it? Forty-eight?
That was eighty-one.
Well, eighty, yeah, eighty-one would be good, 'cause that's the, the detail.
The detail, all the reports started, seventy-seven, actually.
Yeah, so, so what we've got here is, we have those four buildings, and we began working with Joe in May. And he, um, went through, walked through the buildings with staff, walked through on his own, brought through his own consultants, met with staff to review existing needs, future needs, went through a mechanical review of all the buildings. That's still in process. So particularly in this building, there's so many mechanical systems that are very expensive and have been very costly. Those are still, that's not part of what you're seeing here so far. Uh, and Joe, i- in, in, in light of this process, issued letters which helped to describe what he found in his process. Um, so I wanna go through these one by one. And again, let's, we're gonna stay a thousand-foot view on this. We're not gonna get too deep in this, but I'm just gonna go on what his, his responses were and where we're, where we can go from here. So the first one is the Opera House. Uh, the concerns from Maple Street Design, the sprinkler system most of all.
Page ninety-two, Ellen.
That's great. So we, our sprinkler system in this building obviously is, has been an issue. It, it caused a great deal of damage, damage that caused us to have to renovate a great deal of this, this, this room, as well as the upstairs. Um, this, the conditions that caused that damage still exists, which effectively is a dry sprinkler system, which has, um, been in place for thirty-five or so years. It has corroded, it's leaky, and once it's full, and, and that dry system is full, it leaks, and of course, we had issues here. We failed an inspection in May of twenty twenty-five, which puts our, uh, our licensing for dances at risk.
It's not, it's any public event. You get a dance license for any public event that happens in a public building.
For those of us that remember the budget meeting where there was so much dancing going, I think I remember, yes. And as Clay termed it, it's revenue, so this is important stuff, so. Um, we, so we, we have a substantial issue with the sprinkler system. Um, the repair on that, at, current estimate's somewhere between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, but effectively means all the sprinkler has to come out. Uh, the exterior conditions are concerning. We have siding and trim, which requires repainting. The painting, this building was painted in twenty thirteen. Uh, at that time, the town took a bond out. We're currently still paying on that bond. Um, but we need to paint again. And there's also trees growing in the, uh, in, in some of the.
It's a hanging garden.
That's it. That's nice. Uh, so we have some issues. We have shrubbery that needs to be cut back, but, but the siding and trim is, is an issue. Uh, accessibility, the Parker Room is inaccessible, even though somehow all of you found a way to get in here. Um, if any of us were, uh, in a, a If any of us were in a wheelchair or some other issue.
Using a cane, it's, the slopes are difficult, especially going up.
Bingo. That's right. It's, it's more of a ski slope, or a ski jumping slope than it is an accessible entrance to, of the only meeting room that the town has. So that's a, that's a deep concern. There are sketches in here that, that Joe pulled together of some methods on which we could address that issue. Again, don't, don't take it to heart. Don't run to the Parks Committee yet and thinking we're gonna take half of Mary Lee Park to, to put, you know, access. But this is a very big issue because as we all, this is the only, you know, meeting space we use. So it's, it's, it's an important issue. The stair chair is inoperable far too often. Glenn's just here for, I'm, I'm just looking at him cuz I know he gets the, the task of often trying to get that thing going. Our access upstairs and downstairs is really limited to what that chair can provide. We have no bathroom upstairs, so that chair has to exist. Otherwise, we can't allow people to use bathroom, the bathroom. You know, they have to go around the outside. And of course, we have an inaccessible, uh, door down here. So it's a problem. And then I mentioned no bathrooms on the main level. He's still looking at the insulation and mechanical, but these are concerns. And I look at all of these issues as somewhat pieces of a puzzle that we have to somewhat confront. When we have to confront them, how we confront them, that's really from here forward. It's not a, we're gonna put, you know, all of these repairs in the budget next year. There's, there's probably gonna need to be some sort of annouement or some sort of private fundraising to support this building. There will probably need to be some sort of use of TIF funds to support this building. But there also needs to be a conversation of, at what point does the town's investment in this building cease? This is a building that is part of our history. It, it's only a few years after our incorporation as a town. But it is our, it is our town, you know, our, our Opera House. And that's, it's one of the few buildings that sort of exists in that way. Rockporters do have a, you know, there is a tie to this building. But at what cost? We, you know, Doug mentioned, you know, public safety and, and there's a cost, there's a limit to that. There's a limit to all things. And so that's a conversation that I think all of us have to have.
Well, let's jump up to the thirty thousand foot.
Keep going, yeah.
And I would not be in favor of this, but it has been thrown around in conversation in town. There's some people think we should sell this building.
Yep.
Sell it to store, you know, and I'm being blunt about it.
No, I know, yeah.
That's what John opened up.
You know, uh, you know, sell it to stores, to the lessors or somebody and let them worry about it.
Yeah, no, I, it, that would, a big part of me would, would probably die at that idea. I, you know, Halloween.
Obligated to raise.
Right. And those are the hard decisions we have to make. Again, these are the hard decisions that we all have to face. So I, I, at this point, I'm merely putting it on the platter for you all to consume and think about. The board will do a lot more work on all of this. There'll be, you know, this will, this is not the last time that this is discussed in a public meeting before next steps, but.
In this building particularly, the estimates are missing a key component, which is the mechanical.
Absolutely.
John, all these reports you're going through in each of these town buildings, does the Budget Committee have to do any decisions on these reports?
No, I, I mean, at some point, it'd be part of the bu, it may be part of a budget that comes before.
But you're not recommending it's part of the budget?
No.
So we really don't have to, we can read these.
Yeah.
We're not gonna take any action on it?
No. Nope, I just, I, really, I want you all to understand, you know, how it all fits together. That's really all it is, Bill, yeah. So let's, we'll, we'll keep moving. Let's talk about Public Works.
Page eighty-one.
Thank you. So, uh, Maple Street Design, uh, so this is a building was built nineteen eighty-seven, the steel building built on slab. The steel frame is rusted and deteriorating. Concrete slabs in poor condition due to frequent flooding and use. The space is insufficient to store frontline vehicles. If you've ever gone into the area where these buildings are, these vehicles are parked, it's, it's somewhat of a, I don't know, Rubik's Cube. I'm not sure how they ever get in or get out, but somehow they do. It's, it's quite, it's quite a feat of, of what they, what our crew does. We have no available space to test the rest quarters, support rest quarters for long storm events. We had tried, Glenn and I and Mike had tried ten ways to Sunday to try to find a way to provide a space that's separate, so there can be a place, often during these storm events, they're coming in and they need to stay over and get, get a rest for a few hours before they go back out. And, but to build sleep quarters, that means the fire marshal has to sign off. That means we have to have, you know, egress and, and sprinklers and, and it goes beyond and beyond. And I give, I give credit to Glenn and, and Mike to try to find creative solutions to this problem, but it, it's, it's a real problem. So right now, what we have is they're sleeping in chairs, they're sleeping in their truck, they're sleeping not in the places that you wanna have someone who's operating a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar plow or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar plow on, on, you know, with blinding snow in their face. But that's where we're at. The wastewater building lacks any bathroom facilities. So the wastewater building was constructed after the, the main Public Works Building was built. Again, wastewater happened just after the, the Public Works Building was, but it lacks a bathroom. Uh, so that, that staff has to walk across the parking lot when they need to use the bathroom. Not to mention, one of our employees is, what's that, he's six-four. Uh, he can't really stand up in his own office. Not exactly adequate. Um, and the current office needs are not met, let alone future use. So this is, again, this is an issue that's really driven more by a rusted, deteriorating piece of infrastructure rather than the ladder of, of office needs and so forth. Again, this is another one where the, no one has, you know, the Select Board has not looked through this. This has not gone anywhere. But again, what does that look like? And so you can get a sense of how it would be laid out on the property, where the, you know, where the various parking areas would go. The old building would be used as storage space. And to give you a sense of the prior, so in the late eighties, when this building was constructed, simultaneously, a new salt shed was constructed at the same time. In, when I was on the board in two thousand and four, we, uh, the voters approved building a new salt shed because that salt shed had already been deteriorated to such a point due to that salt. It had effectively eroded. So we moved into the new salt shed, but we're still using that old salt shed. It's being propped up with gum and baling wire right now. Uh, but it's a storage room. Uh, that building would be demolished and we'd use the old, uh, what was, what would then be the, the old building, the old Public Works Building as storage. So it's a, obviously, this is a big ticket. This is a big, this is a big building. It's not a pretty building. It's a, it's a metal building that's a big, bigger rectangle on the face of the earth. But we have already, we already are working with a building that's just about forty years old. It's a metal building, slab on grade, water coming in the doors. We have issues. And so, again, we, this is all part of what's next, what's coming down the road, where are we going? So.
And I think in the sort of guise of, the Select Board hasn't looked at any of this. And, you know, one thing I'm struck by is we've got four separate buildings that are being analyzed. And yet, there could be some opportunities there to sort of combine some of the new construction so that there's only one new construction project that maybe can combine the uses of some of our town employee. You know, if we bring the, we haven't gotten to the public safety building, but that's a question with our new fire station in West Rockport, how that's gonna be used. So I'm just saying that this is all new to all of us. It's been approached in a particular way, but we, we have some time.
That's right.
To, to look at this in some different ways.
Yep. Nothing is, nothing is falling down today. There is no public safety or, or health concern right now. But if, in terms of those criteria we were looking at, that second criteria is where this building sits.
Okay, a quick question.
Yeah, Helen.
As I recall from taking food to the crews during blizzards, that parking area is not paved. Has that changed?
No, it's not paved.
It was pretty raunchy.
It's, it's raunchier now.
You didn't have three fifty to get in there.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah. And he, is that included, paving that area?
Site work, the whole, the whole schmear, yeah.
So John, can you explain a little bit to me, I mean, back to Bill's comment about, you know, how do we pay for this and when do we pay for it? Are you anticipating that the bulk of this, these projects, if we decide we wanna move ahead with them, would be funded through a bond?
Predominantly, yes.
And then the bond would, the payments on the bond would roll into the budget?
Exactly, yes.
So eventually, there would be some, some impact on the budget. And are you, and at any, at any stage, are you at any stage to where you're ready to, you know, roll these all to get, propose rolling these all together in a big bond or?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the, I, I wanna be fair to you. And your four colleagues and then the fourteen, you know, the Budget Committee, this is the first time you've had a chance to really dig in on this. And so whether it's one, one larger facility or, or, or parcelling these, these issues out, of course, you need to have a large parcel to be able to pull off something like that. But, um, we, we, I think that the, the real question is, is, you know, the appetite. And how do you make it something that the taxpayers can afford? And, and thinking about that over, these are expen, you know, these are expenditures that over a thirty-year bond, right? There's no question, this is a thirty-year bond. There's no question that the need or, or what you would be building has a lifespan that's decades into the future. You know, you wanna build with a little bit of extra to make sure that you're not, you know, building something that you have to add on to tomorrow. But you don't wanna be unwise and, and foolhardy in, in what your, your scope is. And I think that's where we are right now, is the scoping is where the board can be engaged to say, okay, this is where I, this is what makes sense. This is where it doesn't make sense. And I think, you know, there's, because we're here, the Budget Committee's here, the public is involved. We wanna make sure everyone's part of that process because ultimately, we want successful, uh, support for wherever we end up.
So at this stage, we're just seeing this the first time.
Yep.
We're probably gonna have a lot of discussions. Should we have a separate workshop on this at some point?
Yeah.
Sort of try to give you a, you know, what we think is.
I think so.
First, second, third, we should focus on, okay?
Uh, well, and I would, my, I'm, I've, each of these items has, uh, each of the items that are in this plan all have a project priority assessed to them. The priority that I am, that I, I've put the, the Opera House and the public seat, and the Public Works Building at, at a, a higher rating than the other two projects. And the reason for that is, one, the Opera House, both have deteriorating conditions. Both are, that clearly classify in that, in that realm. They are, they aren't public safety concerns, but they're definitely that next step below. So, um, yeah. So I'm gonna move through the public safety building.
Page seventy-seven.
So this is a little, these next two are a little different. Public Safety Building, the existing use, Randy's here, certainly can add more to this. But existing use did not meet basic needs of the police department's operational requirements. There's no dedicated intake area. There's no private interrogation and meeting space. The evidence locker in the basement is not climate controlled. There's mold concerns. We had had a environmental group come in and look at the space in the spring. They found two issues. They found mold in the basement. Glenn is, is working to abate right now. He's, he's been trained in that work and knows how to deal with that. So if he's sneezing, you'll understand why. Uh, but he's, he's trying to get that space cleared out and at least operable for storage. But, uh, we have our evidence locker down there. And, um, I mean, I've watched Matlock, but I, I don't, I'm guessing I could probably, or Perry Mason. I imagine I could get a conviction thrown out with mold growing on evidence. Uh, so we have, we have some issues. It is, for those who aren't familiar, the, this is, this is the former meeting room for the Select Board and, and the Planning Board and everybody else. And it's, it's actually become a pseudo workout space. It's also, the vault is down, the old vault, uh, as well as, um, everything that is from Rockport's history, it seemingly was down there. Glenn?
Worth a visit.
It is worth a visit. I, and I'd certainly invite any of you to come down. Randy can take you in. Bring a mask, bring in N ninety-five maybe with you. But, um, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's concerning. But, so there, there's, you know, this is, this is a sixty-year-old building. Um, and we're dealing with that. The, the parking for police vehicles, so those, we always get phone calls, why are the cruisers running out front of the police station, right? Well, we have to keep the car warm. We have to keep the car running, so that way in the event of an issue, the, you know, a call, they're able to jump in and go. Um, we don't have covered storage for the, the cruisers. The fire department has, while they've moved, you know, a lot of their operation to the West Rockport Station, there's still a substantial footprint in that public safety building. Uh, and there, there will continue to be. Um, and while, you know, the police and fire departments have always worked together in that, in that realm, there's, there's not ample space to put all the cruisers inside. So that just sort of, that's, that's a, that's a big issue for the police force. And then mechanical, we talked a little about mechanical. And we mentioned it actually in the budget process last year. The boiler's reached its end of life. Um, and that's a concern. And then lastly, the water testing indicates the presence of lead due to aged pipes. Now, we've always put, this is, I always wondered why there was always so much bottled water around. Now we know why. So this is a concern. And this is something, again, we put this with all the others and not to minimize any, any issues, but these are real issues. Is there anything Randy, I should add to?
Other than Twitch that I developed?
The Twitch.
Well, that explains.
I would just say that if any of you'd like, we could schedule a meeting over there. Bring your own N ninety-five mask. We try to keep the budget down. And we will supply the water for you to drink if you'd like, right out of the tap. I do have a concern about that. I don't know what happens when you wash your hands in lead contaminated water, but that needs to be addressed. And it's a health consideration that, you know, we're trying to do some remediation, but it smells awful in there. Anybody wants to come over for a tour, I'm happy to take your one. But our office is working in that. If you gotta decontaminate, you're decontaminating with the water from the tap. I don't think you're decontaminating anything.
Nobody's drinking the water, though.
I hope not. We all know that, it's a no-no, but it, uh, what are the long-term effects of people that are using that? And the future of workers' call complaints down the road or something. I think that's something that we need to address.
Okay, and the last of these office buildings, again, I've got more items, but let's just get to the office buildings, uh, the Town Office.
Maybe six.
The Town Office, in large part, the Town Office, I talked about the, the Rubik's Cube this is. A lot of the Town Office issues and needs for Town Office would rise if the town chose to do something like sell the Opera House. So there is, I mean, obviously, this space doesn't exist anywhere else in town. So we would need to replicate this somewhere. We would need to, you know, there's, but I think, I think the decision that the Opera House can and should be made first. And then there's some cascading effects that might affect this, this issue. So in light of that, going through the rest of these, um, the meeting space need is unmet. So even though this is the meeting space, this is a meeting space that's available now. There is, in the olden days, a couple of years ago, we had the Richardson Room available. We can host, easily host two meetings at the same time. And we have needs for those as well. We can't do that anymore. As those, some of you may know, that is now converted to meetings, to office space. As was proposed and as was part of the plan for the eventual growth of the Town Office Building when it was constructed in the late nineties, is that that building, that room, that meeting room, the Richardson Room, would eventually become office space when needed. Well, we were needed. There is a small conference room that's, that's near my office. That gets used frequently. But a meeting of, say, of something the size of, say, Parks or the Budget Committee, there's no way you could all fit in there.
Yeah, the libraries served a use, I mean, the library's really stepped up and.
They have.
Space has helped for a lot of the committees.
They have, yeah. The, the Marine Room is one that, that's a bit quieter and you can use. Uh, and of course, when we were, we had issues here, we used the downstairs, but it obviously. Uh, and of course, when we were, we had issues here, we used the downstairs, but it obviously took a great deal of setup, tear down, just to hold those meetings. So, it was, it was an issue. Uh, there is no broadcast capabilities at the Town Office. There are only large meeting spaces available here. File storage is a bill, is a real issue. For those of you who don't know, a lot of our records have to be saved forever. Ninety-nine years for employment records, um, all of, a lot of, uh, Megan's work is seven years. There are a lot of records we can never get rid of. So file storage is lacking, um, a number of offices are also duplicating as file storage. The vault's full, uh, we have files that are stored, stored offsite in areas that, to, I'd say, poor condition, but they're, let's just put this, they're not climate controlled. There are some stored in cemeteries, there are some stored in backrooms, and, uh, it, it's not great. Uh, and so the state laws, maybe we have, make sure we have to keep, keep an eye on those. Elections, so there, while the elections are, are currently held at the library, there have been issues raised by the Secretary of State's Office about accessibility of that, of that space. Not to say it doesn't, doesn't respond well as a library, but as a po, as a polling place, the, the bar is about as high as it can possibly go in a public space. And so the ability for, you know, all, people of all abilities effectively to vote is, is a hypersensitive issue. So, there, there have been issues raised about the library, they've allowed it to go through, but that's something that we should all be mindful of. Uh, the office space limitation, all existing office spaces are utilized to the fullest, there's no room at the end. And then mechanical, oil boiler and in floor, and in floor heat operates inefficiently. Glenn and I have talked about that as long as he's probably been in buildings and grounds and beyond. There's no easy answer to it, we've had everyone look at it under the sun and, and there haven't been easy answers. So, those are the four buildings, I, I give it to you, I give it to, to digest and think about, but it's, these are, these will come back, these issues are not dead, but they are real.
Quick question about the spaces. Have we ever explored, I mean, since summer, a budget goes with, like, the schools?
Yeah.
Like, they have a number of different conference rooms?
Yeah.
Like, the new, um, the new superintendent's office, like, has a huge meeting space, like, are we able to utilize those when we have duplicate meetings?
I would say they're, they're not the easiest to work with in terms of getting meeting space to use. And usually, worse, worse, I, I'm looking at less from the perspective of trying to organize like our own meetings, but like Parks or trying to hose, or house another, a meeting of another group, harbor committee. So we're trying to like, manage that, you know, that space as opposed to going out and seeking out others. The school also has limitations on what they'll allow for types of meetings in their, in their rooms. I would love to say they were a better partner on this, but they're not. Can I, does that, does that say it all? Okay. So, yeah, I'm just being honest, you know?
What about the Harbor Master Building, is there any, that's another big building.
Yeah, no, there's, there's not really good space there.
No, no, I don't mean for that, I mean.
Oh, in terms of this type of review?
Lifetime and stuff, yeah.
Well, you know, that, that's actually a spot where we've spent, uh, and, and buildings and grounds really has taken on that project to modernize, replace windows, um, do the bathroom upgrades, uh, saved an incredible amount of money if we had put that out. I. Is it done?
Yeah.
There we go. So I, I think we're, that's, if we could get to a place where all of our, all of our projects were, Glenn and, and can just manage those buildings as that, we're going to be, we're going to save so much money in the end. The problem is, is everything else has gone on so long that we're, 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 we're just dredging up that all over the place. It's frustrating.
In the library, the library committee is responsible for the building envelope and roof and everything, is that correct?
We are.
Okay, well, let's go to that then, okay? What, uh, you know, it's a fairly new building.
Yeah.
Well, that, you saw the ten thousand dollars in reserves going in each year.
Yeah, okay.
We had, uh, so Ben, and, and you probably know this, we had some, some substantial, um, sprinkler repairs. How did that, what did that total, like seventy-five hundred, eight thousand?
Fifty-three, thirty-four.
But that was, I thought that was one, wasn't there a second?
So, yeah, seven, seven's a good estimate.
So, yeah, so we're, you know, that's, that's sort of, I mean, I don't know, you want to come up, Ben, just to talk about that?
So, are we just looking at like the reserve accounts, or do you want to?
Well, just talking about why we put ten aside for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, so the sprinkler system just had a compressor that blew out on it. And the repair for that alone was, I mean, we had to have somebody emergency come in because it happened on a Saturday, of course. Um, and then the repair for that was five, over five thousand dollars, so, and then with the other people coming in, it totaled around, around seven, uh, thousand, just for that one issue. Um, the building's going to turn five in December, so it's time to start saving and anticipating these types of events. Like, it's just going to start happening.
Yeah, for sure. So we, that's really why we sort of wanted to take, you know, we talked about, we had elevator repair reserves, and we talked about other ways, and we're trying to just make it bigger and, and broader. So, if it's a sprinkler repair or it's something else.
Yeah, I used to have different, yeah, we used to have different reserve accounts for everything, and now it's like, let's just lump it into one. But it's for the HVAC and the elevator mostly, and then hopefully saving money now for like the roof, but that shouldn't happen for, you know, twenty years or more, but saving now will make it cheaper.
Sure.
And the leak repair won't be cheap when we finally come to a solution for that.
Boy, yeah, that's.
I respect the question, but you won't believe how, what a wicked well we have.
I can fill you in anytime, come to the library, we'll chat.
It's unbelievable.
You're going to have a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a rough one.
Five years old. Five years old.
Yep.
In December, yeah, it's exciting.
Now, I'm talking about the expense.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
John, I, I just had a question, because I, thinking back on the harbor, um, we have some, um, is Abby still here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the, the commercial floats and some of those other expenses, you know, we do have a, and maybe Ryan wants to check in on this, with the two, two million dollar working waterfront grant. It's a matching grant, can we tap some of that funding to cover the costs here for that?
Well, um, we're going to have a conversation with that grant administrator at some point, now that the plan has been accepted by the Select Board. We just have it out there at this point.
Yeah, but if.
It is a matching grant.
It is a matching grant, basically, we can, you know, that's half of what we'd be spending right there. Anyway, I just bring that up there.
Well, no, it's, that's a great segue into the next one, which is the Harbor Strategic Plan in Walker Park.
Page sixty-seven.
So this was created by Richardson and Associates, WSP Engineering. We had the Harbor Strategic Plan Task Force who worked on this plan. And, you know, there, the goal was really to create a, a plan for Rockport Harbor that allows it to sustain some of the changes that climate has thrown at us, the damage that we've sustained at the harbor in recent years, and, and to ensure that Rockport Harbor looks like Rockport Harbor as much as it possibly can decades into the future. So we, here we mentioned the grant, so there is a two million dollar matching grant that we can throw at this problem. But as you look at, when you look at the, uh, appendix that talks about the cost of this plan, it's well more than two million dollars. So, there is a task force that was created by the Select Board at their meeting last Tuesday, who will take this, uh, this plan and try to turn it into some bite-sized chunks that can hopefully meaningfully take the two million dollars, use it to its best benefit, limit the amount of impact the taxpayers have to come up with, try to find some alternative sources for funding. But also, look, this is also, again, this isn't a five-year plan, we're talking about issues there twenty, thirty, fifty years in the future as well. But what, the issue that, that Abby and, and I talked about incessantly when we dealt with these damages, is how do you know what to do first? How do you, you know, where are we going to end up? And how do we make sure we aren't wasting the, the taxpayers' money or FEMA's, you know, taxpayers in a different sort? How do we ensure that that's the best bang for that buck? And so that's really why this came to be. Walker Park is also part of that process because, you know, this just in, that, that harbor, that frontage got battered as well. So, there's a similar approach that's, that's taken there, but, um, the task force is hopefully going to help us provide some guidance to the Select Board and then eventually back through the budget process, um, to fund some of this. But there are some funds we have, there's some hope, there's some, I think, positive momentum that I think can help to, to generate some positive, uh, action here, but it's, it's a big number. And again, this is what, you know, this is why we're doing this, is to be aware, like, there's a lot of competing needs here. And the last one of these that are in this vein is the Village Partnership Initiative.
Page seventy-two.
Get ready, Doug. So, uh, this was, uh, this was a plan that was created by Stool and Newshed in twenty-twenty-four. The Village Partnership Task Force endorsed the majority of the plan that they created. But the entirety of the items within the CIP, so what's moved, what's, what has moved forward into the CIP is what the task force recommended. There were two parts to the CI, to this recommendation, one is the work along Pascal Ave, across, uh, Main Street, Central Street, up Union Street, and ending at Graffums. Just sort of that, that, I guess, that corridor. It's, it's the, and it's also, most importantly, it coincides and dovetails with the work on the Goose River Bridge, which is due to be here and sometime sooner than never, but, um, there's been a lot of plans about twenty-twenty-six and twenty, out, out to bid in twenty-twenty-six and construction in twenty-twenty-seven. The important part for us here is that first, um, square on the, on the lower left, which is Main DOT loves this project. And they have put this entire project before, um, our, our congressional delegation, we have support. It's main, so main DOT, this is sort of Main DOT's ask of Congress, and we're in the mix. What does that mean? I don't know. But what it does mean is that if we were successful, it's a ninety-ten match, in that ninety percent of the project will be funded by the federal government and ten percent will be responsibility of the town. So when you look at those two pieces, one being that corridor and the other being a pathway out to the schools, uh, it's about a ten million dollar project, ten, eleven million dollar project. So, you're talking ninety-ten, then that means that the, the town has to come up with one point one million or so, um, to address that. So, where does that come from, where does it go to? Again, these are long-term needs, they're largely dependent upon finding nine million dollars or ten million dollars. If we do, we have to be ready. And some aspects of this plan are, are, I would, priorities, but I would also say somewhat necessities of the current plans drawn for the Goose River Bridge. And the Goose River Bridge plans, and, you know, you guys can certainly add to this, but the idea is to have two, two sidewalks, one sidewalk on each side of the bridge. And we would need to have a sidewalk that continues and ties in with our existing sidewalks. That's actually part of the VPI plan, um, but we would need to follow through on that effort if the bridge, bridge is constructed. Now, that's a much smaller cost than ten million dollars, obviously, but just to get a sense of who, what, where, when, and what are the priorities, I think that lays it out pretty well. Is there anything that Doug or needs?
No, I think there's, there's a lot of good things in there, some are, just involve paint, really. Painting the lines, striping of the roads, um, things that just make it a more walk, walkable area. And I think as we think about budget issues, you know, it's, we have our budget hats on and that's important and that's where we are. But we also have to think about what we want the town of Rockport to look like in the future. As a place, I mean, we have a, a happy problem, people want to live here. And that's not true of every town. And I think a lot of that is because of the investments we've made into making this a livable community. So I think we just, you know, not during the budget process, but just let's keep that in mind, that we're not just, we're a special town and we want to remain a special town.
So that leads us to our last item, which is four items. And the, I kind of collect, call these aspiration of grant opportunity items. Orion has some fingerprints on a lot of these. The recreation field expansion is one that, that Jason and I have been talking about and working on. Again, that involves, that's, again, a bit of a, of a long term, but there's a great deal of field overuse. Some of it may be addressed in part with Rockport Common, but not in full. The Route One Multi-Use Path, Phases One, Two, and Three effectively connects Route One with pedestrian connections from Pima to Rockland, using all three phases. The cost is tremendous, as probably we all would expect, you know, expect. But there are developers, there are grants, there are different ways in which you get there. And, and the townwide multi-use trail was one that was in part driven by the fact that there was a fairly extensive grant that was offered for trail work, um, and that was, you know, I think, I don't think, that, we, we, we didn't, we didn't move forward with that. But, but these are the types of projects that aren't necessarily shovel-ready or, or ready to go. But by us including them in our, in our package here, it allows us to bring them to developers, to bring them to grant agencies, to bring them, um, some of them are part of our comprehensive plan. But we have to talk about them as part of, at least in some respect, funding them or talking about when would we fund them or why would we fund them? Because that is, um, you know, that's their, their due course. And then the last is the Corridor Multi-Use Path, uh, on Route Ninety. That's effectively going from the schools and out Route Ninety, first to, um, the intersection of Meadow Street, and then beyond to, um, Seventeen and Ninety. So, you know, again, I don't, I, I don't know that I would, uh, play these numbers in, in your Powerball this week and expecting that we're going to hit on all, all four of them. But, you know, these are the, somewhat the things you have to have in your back pocket in case you never know who's going to show up at the door and, and want to talk to Orion and then want to talk to me, and then who knows where we go. So, again, not something that you need to carve out room or, or worry about. That's all we have, closing remarks, thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight and, um, certainly glad I had three questions you have after the break. Thanks.
Thanks, John and Megan and all the department heads who are here.